To find a razor.
And we're live.
We're live?
Yes, sir.
All right, in about another thirty seconds, it'll be 6:01. And then we'll be ready to get started. Thank you. Tomorrow, we're good?
Yes, we are.
Okay. All right, with the order, we begin by pledge allegiance, followed by moment of silence. We're asking you to stand wherever you're located and pledge your flag, please. Pledge allegiance.
The United States of America. And to the republic which is standing.
One nation. Moment of silence, please. Okay, roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffiths?
Here.
Mr. Hines?
Here.
Ms. Houck?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Ms. Rado?
Here.
Mr. Snee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present. All present? Thank you. Moving down to first item there, recognitions and cerimonies, proclamations. We have several retirements. Emily Intell, Intellicato. She's worked with children and youth. Judith Kretzky. Mental health and mental services. Beverly Neely. Area agency on aging. Donna Million. Public defender's office. Rebecca Willis. Children and youth. I congratulate them and send them a letter of congratulations and good health going forward. Best wishes in their retirement. Moving down, additions and deletions to the voting session agenda.
Mr. McGinley? It's Linda Houck. I would like to add two items to the voting agenda. The first would be a motion to reconsider the ordinance that was passed last week. And the other would be a motion to adopt the resolution that I sent to all council, extending the discount period for the taxes to August 31st. I believe everybody should have received a copy of that.
Any questions? Any problem with adding those to the agenda? There are none, they'll be moved to the agenda on the county council on the backside of the page in front of you.
Mr. McGinley, Mr. McGinley is Walter.
Yes, go ahead.
I have received two text messages, one from Mr. Manta and one from Mr. Carr that said that they are not able to connect to the, to the site, so I don't know what, whether Jared wants to jump in and try and fix that or not, but they said they're dialing in the 570-340-0615. And they're typing in the code, but they're not getting, able to get access to the, to the site.
One second, we'll deal with that.
Okay.
I think you wanted to add something to the agenda, am I correct?
I don't think I did. I don't believe I did today. What, what did I? What did I send you an email on, Mr. McGinley? Oh, yes, yes, thank you for reminding me. I did, yes, I did want to, C cap sent out an email earlier today asking for anybody who wanted to get on to the letter for asking the federal government for aid for the different counties. And I thought it would be prudent for us to make a motion as, to get that information out to C cap so they could get us on the letter. I believe the county manager from Erie County set that up. So I think it's important that we get as much support out there for the federal aid as we can. If you put that under, I appreciate it.
Got a copy of that letter, am I correct, Mr. Griffiths?
Yeah, I think Sharon put it in a packet, I do believe.
But I think your email had everybody too, right?
Yes.
Any problem with adding that letter that Mr. Griffith submitted from C cap as number four? There are none, that's added as number four on the under county council agenda items. Jared, did you hear Mr. Griffith's comment regards to people trying to call in? Jared?
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Morrow sent a little message saying that he's looking at the code to make sure it's correct on the website. Looking at the code on website now.
All right. Mr. Griffiths, did you hear what Kendra said?
I did, thank you.
Okay. Hopefully they'll get, make sure that code's correct and then they'll allow them to be able to participate.
Okay, thank you.
Adoption of the voting session agenda, do we have a motion?
So moved. So moved.
Ms. Houck, do we have a second?
Second, Walter.
Mr. Griffiths? All in favor of the agenda with the additions as submitted? Indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any extensions, none heard, motion carried. Going down below that. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding requirement. Majority of those participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting. We've been doing this the last several meetings, but we want to continue because obviously the current situation does not allow for a physical presence, so we have a motion.
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Snee, you have a second. Sheila? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. And the second motion, again, dealing with the current pandemic. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding in conduct of public meetings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the terms of the manager's emergency declaration. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffiths? Do we have a second?
Second.
Leanne?
Yes.
Very good. On a question? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carried. Getting down to public comment. All right, Morrow has, under the conversation, the codes on the website are correct. I tried calling in and it works. You can have them call my office phone. Walter, if you are texting with them or whatever, do you see the office number?
I, Jason just said he's, he's on now, so I guess he's okay. And I think Rich, I think Rich Manta's, I think I'm just got an answer from him, I think he's all right as well.
All right. Well, then we should, we should be okay, it sounds like, correct?
Yep, it sounds like it. Those are the only two that sent an email, thanks.
Yeah, I, I don't have any myself. Anyone else? Okay, we're down to the public comment. So, Mr. Carr, you're, we know you're on, so do you want to speak to the public comment regarding the agenda? Mr. Carr? Mr. Manta? Anyone from the public who would like to speak to agenda items?
They aren't muted, are they?
I don't know. They're calling in, I don't believe they're on the team platform, I think they're calling in, so I don't think they're muted.
The public comment should be open on my side here.
Okay, public comment is open, Jared confirms. Anyone else? Anyone in the public like to comment at this time?
Jason Carr.
Jason Carr.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Carr. Go ahead, Mr. Carr.
I think we're muted.
Okay, I would just like to thank Walter Griffiths for proposing to give the taxpayers relief regarding the penalty through December 31st, 2020. I would like to ask all of Luzern County Council to reconsider giving the extension through December 31st. When they deem necessary, or when they deem it's timely to do so. Many people are suffering in the county and that needs to be done. If you look at the county of Lackawanna, Lackawanna County has afforded that to their taxpayers as well as the city of Allentown, Pennsylvania. And secondly, I would like to know why Northeast Revenue Services that services both Luzern County and Lehigh County have a different standard for assessing properties out of the Tax清 Bureau. In the county of Lehigh, Northeast Revenue does follow the law and assesses a property purchased or bid out of the Tax清 Bureau according to the purchase price. Whereas Luzern County assesses arbitrarily or puts an amount on the property and then requires you to file an appeal. Which is not adhering to the law as it states. I have contacted, I did speak to the Attorney General's office and he felt that even though it was discussed, he doesn't understand why Luzern County does not begin following the law, the statutes of the state of Pennsylvania and begin the practice that the law requires, as well as why is there a discrepancy between how Northeast Revenue assesses properties out of Lehigh County and out of the Tax清 Bureau? And how do they assess them differently out of Luzern County? Why, why is there a discrepancy there? Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Carr, and I think that you had sent us an email in that regard last week, so that was part of the public comment last week also for Northeast Revenue in that particular case. Mr. Manta? Is Mr. Manta on the line? Is he on? Any, anyone aware? Anyone else from the public?
Hi, this is Matt Crone from Freeland Borough, please.
Matt? Go ahead.
Yes. Okay, I'm, I'm a member of Borough Council and also a taxpayer in Freeland. I, I had listened to part of the call last week when the original motion was made and then the amended motion was passed. I think it's an oversimplification for council to say that their decision does not impact upon the municipality, especially when the municipality share a tax bill with the county. Okay. And I also sent this in email, so I know Mr. McGinley got back to me and a few other folks. So logistically, the way this is going to work is that somebody comes in to pay their bill in June because we cannot afford to move our date. We have 25% of our tax revenue outstanding, which might, you know, $100,000 might not sound like a lot to the county council members, but it's a lot in a town of 3,500. So somebody's going to pay their bill, they're going to give us the stub and they're not going to have a stub to pay in August or September or all the way out into December. The borough paid money for these bills to go out. County council's changing the game here after the fact. If new bills need to be sent out, then the county should absorb those costs and the municipality should not be expected to perform gymnastics in order to get on board with this. Second of all, kinda is, it, you know, it, it kind of puts us in a bad position because county council so benevolent and gave this to people, people who are getting an extra $600 a week in emergency unemployment. And now we look like bad guys if we don't get on board with it. So to say that it doesn't impact municipalities is just not accurate.
Yeah, and I think everybody got your email earlier today, Mr. Crone.
Excuse me, Mr. McGinley, I'm back online.
Okay, hold on one second. Mr. Crone, are you finished?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Manta, you're up.
Yeah, like I said, I listened to the call last week about the tax, the revenue and that. I believe that they should extend it to December because of the fact that that the people are still not getting their stimulus money. And most of the people that are going to pay their taxes are going to pay their taxes through their eschols. I spoke to some people about it and they said it's really, it's an irrelevant thing. But they would like to see it extended to the, to December. And I feel that that would give the taxpayers of the Luzern County a break so that they could save money until then. Because right now, the main thing that people need right now is food on their table, a roof over their head, and a vehicle that they can drive to, so they could get back to work. If the, if the country and the county was open, I would say no problem. But we're not, the governor Wolf is not going to open anything till May 8th. So people haven't been working. And then how many people are going to get into a restaurant? Or how many people are going to feel comfortable in spending money out in the public? So I mean, it, it just makes more sense if they would just do it now, get it over with, and extend it out to, to the, to December date that Walter had already put in his ordinance. And, and that's my feeling because, you know, like I said, I've called a lot of places in, in the valley for food banks. And I think I called the one over on Marcus Street. I spoke to the people over there. So a lot of, and then there was one in Piston that I can't, I called the number twice and I can't even get an answer. So, so people need food. I mean, come on, like, you know, people need someplace to live. So I mean, if you're going to put your foot on their neck and say, well, we're going to demand our taxes to lead me, constituents of, of Luzern County are going to be very upset with this whole thing because they're not even going to be able to get back to work. And you're already at their throats with tax money. Come on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manta. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else?
Brian, Brian Shiner, Kingston.
Okay, Brian.
Good evening, everyone. Is, in reference to the extension of the face value for the county taxes, I can understand some of the municipalities feeling that they have to go along with this or, or it's going to cause problems, but in reality, it's not. The bill clearly states no partial payments accepted. So if I want to pay my taxes now during face in Kingston, I can do so and also pay my county at the same time because no partial payments are accepted, so I have to pay both. If I decide to wait until after June 17th and Kingston does not extend the face period, then I simply have to pay the penalty period for Kingston and the face value for the county. It's not a difficult thing. But in all reality, I feel that council should change this around. I don't think it was, it was done properly. The ordinance that was brought last week was not, not handled properly. It should have been voted in or voted out. And Mr. Vog's new idea is a whole different ordinance. And it should have been handled accordingly that way. But this is not a nightmare for the municipalities, it's just a question of taking the total from, from one column and, and the amount from the other column. Add them together and the tax collector can tell you what you owe. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the first item on the agenda. Motion to approve the minutes from the April 21st meeting, do we have a motion?
I think Ron Knapp wanted to get in there, he was chiming in there.
I, I, I didn't hear him. Mr. Knapp? Mr. Knapp?
They said they had him muted.
Well, I, I don't have that capability, I'm sorry. If he comes in before we get to the votes on any of the items, we'll give him an opportunity. Motion to approve the minutes from April 21st, do we have a motion?
So moved. Walter?
Yep, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second, Snee.
Very good. On to question? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any in opposition?
Aye.
No. Steve Urban, no? Yeah.
Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. Moving down.
Hello, can somebody hear me?
Who's that?
Hello?
Hello, who's that? Who's speaking, please?
I'm trying to, I'm, yes, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, can you?
Hello?
Sounds like he dropped.
Yeah, I.
Yeah.
Jared, can you say?
Yeah, I didn't hear him talking before, so I don't think it was working at the beginning during public comment. I have to mute afterwards on, on the live feed side. That way we don't get feedback.
Is he on or off, or can you tell?
He just dropped.
He dropped. So I might come back on?
Yeah, well, why did I get disconnected?
Who's speaking?
Hello?
Who's speaking? Who is speaking, please? Okay, Mr. Knapp, you have a chance now. Go ahead. Go ahead. Who is it, Matt?
Knapp. N-A-P-P.
Okay. I, that's right on.
P-N-A-P-P.
Okay, would you, you have, you have a chance to speak now, please. Mr. Knapp, you have a chance to speak now, please.
Okay, it's my understanding that there's, there's a lapse between phone and video. So.
You have a chance for a public comment, please.
I am, I, I wanted to address the extension.
Go ahead.
I wanted to thank Walter Griffiths for putting forth the ordinance to reduce proper taxes and the penalty from 10 to 0% through December 31st.
Okay, go ahead. Mr. Knapp, do you have anything else, please?
Okay, it's my understanding that there's a lapse between phone and video.
If anyone has their speakers on, on their desktop on this feed, I would recommend muting it because we're getting feedback back and forth.
I, I, I wanted to address the extension.
Go ahead.
I wanted to thank Walter Griffiths for putting forth the ordinance to reduce proper tax and the penalty from 10 to 0% through December 31st.
I believe I have the chance now to get through. This is messed up. It is. Just go ahead.
You're live, they're able to hear you.
Okay. I just felt in respect to Matt Vog turning down the ordinance in, to just 60 days. Meanwhile, manager David Pedre held out on laying off the employees of Luzern County until the employees themselves accepted a voluntary layoff. I would have to ask Councilman Matt Vog if he's suggesting that the taxpayers of Luzern County could be back to normal life and working within 60 days to be able to catch up with this unfortunate setback they were not responsible for. Also, the question of manager Pedre as to why he did not follow the guidelines of Governor Wolf as the stay-at-home order that the taxpayers had no choice but to abide by. If the employees' duties were not essential when they chose to be let off, those duties were not essential when.
That's not on the agenda. You want to speak at the end of the, of the voting session, that's fine. Okay? Agenda items.
It seems as though our communication connection now is working fine. I just wanted to emphasize, I appreciate Councilman Griffiths for putting in the request to, to the ordinance to reduce property taxes, penalties, 10 to 0% through to December 31st. He's looking out for the taxpayers and I would, I would do the same because they didn't call this COVID-19 on and they're really set back at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay. We're down to item number two, which is a reconsideration of the ordinance. Ms. Houck, do you want to speak? First, do we have a motion for that?
I would make that motion.
Ms. Houck, do we have a second to Ms. Houck's motion?
I'll second it.
Mr. Griffiths? Ms. Houck, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, I believe that when we first started this, to talk about what we could possibly do to help the taxpayers, the idea was that perhaps we could extend the discount period. And then there was a question about whether we could legally do that. And because the act that was signed into law didn't happen until April 20th, there really wasn't time for us to do it that way, but I believe that that actually was everybody's, well, it was a lot of people's original intention. So I think that the ordinance that was passed, first of all, by extending the, the face value period, I don't think it really incentivizes people as much as a discount period extension would. And the law allows us to extend the discount period to August 31st. I think more people would be incentivized to pay by August 31st if they know that they're going to get that, that break that they would have had if they had been able to pay before April 17th. I also think it gives people a little more of a, of a buffer period to be able to catch up if they can. And that, of course, is the resolution that I asked to have added after this. But I think in order to consider that resolution, we would have to reconsider this ordinance and actually reverse the vote on it. And that's why I asked for reconsideration of the ordinance.
Mr. McGinley, if I can intervene for a moment? This is Attorney Crocamo. Under the council bylaws, Rule 8E, and consistent with the charter, only the county manager can request reconsideration. Anyone else is about to request reconsideration on a motion which is defeated by a majority vote? And I don't believe that was done, the motion to pass the ordinance obviously did not defeat the ordinance.
In our bylaws, does it say that it can only be on a motion that was defeated, that a motion could be reconsidered?
Well, I'm reading 8E reconsideration. Any motion which is defeated by a majority vote of council may not be interested. may not be introduced for reconsideration at any meeting except as follows. The motion to reconsider is made by a member of the majority that prevailed in the original vote, seconded by any member, and approved by a majority vote of council." Part two speaks to the following, the reorganization.
Okay, I'm just going to look that up. Sure, I'm just going to look that up myself. But anyway, that was the point of my, my request for this. So I guess that if that is the case, then it wouldn't be a reconsideration that would be, we'd be looking at, we would have to actually pass another ordinance to repeal that, that ordinance, if that was council's wish. Anyway, that's the rationale behind all of it. This, this motion, as well as the legislation in the resolution that I asked to have added with it.
Right, okay. Anyone else?
So is the, is the opinion of the solicitor that we cannot reconsider this, is that the opinion?
The opinion, I believe, is that we cannot reconsider at this time. There is a path to follow if you want to bring the ordinance back, or bring a new ordinance to disallow the first one.
I don't, I just get a legal opinion from Ms. Crocamo. Can we bring an ordinance to disallow another ordinance?
Yes.
We can.
You would have to do it by ordinance.
Yeah, we essentially did that with a $5 fee, I believe.
That's, yeah, that's an example, the recent example.
Okay.
So, Ms. Crocamo, what you're saying then, and I'm, I'm still looking in the bylaws, I have to find it, but what you're saying is that if a week after we took a vote that everybody voted in a certain way on, but a majority of people decided that they wanted to change their minds, there's no mechanism whereby we could take a vote and change the vote that we took last week?
Not according to the charter or the bylaws. There's, there, the, the language in the bylaws that I read is, is clear and unequivocal, and there is no process that's outlined in the charter. If you want to vacate this, the, the ordinance that was passed, it would have to be done through another ordinance and follow the procedures of, of the process of, with regards to ordinances.
Okay, then, Mr. McGinley, would it be appropriate for me to introduce an ordinance to repeal the ordinance that was passed last week at this time?
I, I think Ms. Howe can correct me if I'm wrong, that we, we have to submit it in written format, which I think we could do for the next meeting without a problem.
That's correct.
Well, all right, I'll have it in writing. In fact, if you take enough time with public comment at the end of this meeting, you'll have it before the meeting ends.
Okay. Then Ms. Howe, are you going to withdraw the motion?
Uh, well, uh.
I have two questions, if I may.
Yeah, well, let's finish with Ms. Howe, and then you'll have a chance.
Go ahead, that's fine, let Mr. Haas speak.
Okay, Mr. Haas, you've got the floor.
Thank you, thank you both, I think it's your main. First of all, a couple of questions. Number one, certainly this council before has, we certainly come around and follow through on Ms. Howe's motion to reconsider. Now, I, I can't recall, it's been eight years, if it's always, if it's always been resolutions or ordinances. So do the bylaw statements, Crocamo, are they specifically for ordinances? That you can't make a motion to reconsider?
It says a motion, so the, the motion that would have to be reconsidered is the motion to adopt the ordinance. Or the motion to adopt the resolution, that it's a motion, so that's the, it's a catch-all. It, it's an umbrella, so to speak.
Okay, well, I'm just saying that we certainly set the precedent before that, that we've certainly done this, what Ms. Howe is requesting in the past, and I, I can't recall specifics, but I think anybody that's served over on the council the past several years, I think does remember that. So I, I don't know if we could quickly do some research on that as well. And if that's not the case, don't, because we're in an emergency situation, don't, don't, doesn't the charter provide for certain avenues to passing ordinance that really we want to observe normally?
Well, if it's an emergency.
Especially something like this where time is of the essence, for something like.
Councilman House, if it's a, if it's an emergency ordinance, even if it's passed, it expires in 30 days. So, the recommendation and the opinion of the Office of Law, after conferring, I conferred with Attorney DeLuca, I conferred with Attorney Craig Lepcansky, that in order to vacate the ordinance that was passed, it would have to be done by ordinance.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Vito DeLuca. The other issue, I think, is Section 2.12 of the Charter, which addresses reconsiderations of ordinances and resolutions. That, of course, addresses a situation where the county manager would have the ability to request reconsideration. But subsection C of 2.12 says that the county manager does not request consideration as set forth in Section 2.12B of the Charter. "The ordinance or resolution passed by county council shall become effective as set forth in this charter." So I think, in addition to the issue we have with the bylaws, there may be an issue with the charter of doing anything other than just presenting a new ordinance to rescind the, the one that was just passed and, and effectuate whatever you want to do differently.
Mr. DeLuca, it's Linda Howe. Could you look at 8D3 of the Charter?
Charter or bylaws?
Or bylaws, I'm sorry, bylaws.
8E or D3?
D, D, as in DeLuca.
Oh, okay. Yes, 8D3.
Okay, so this is about introducing a proposed ordinance?
Movements to take or reconsider action. To introduce a proposed ordinance, yes.
So where does this deal with reconsidering action on an ordinance? And so that deals with, excuse me, that section deals with ordinances and resolutions. But then, the next section about reconsideration is a motion. So I guess my question is, does that apply to that 8E rule? Does that apply to any, any motion, including a motion to adopt an ordinance? Or is that a motion such as what we would take to amend the bylaws, which would just be a simple motion?
I, I don't know.
I just, I find it, I just find it very difficult that if we all voted one way in one week and we wanted to change the vote the following week, that there is no mechanism that we could do that. And I don't even know if a majority of council would vote for this, but it seems to me that what I would like to propose is more in spirit with the idea that we had going into this when the law, the state law, actually prevented us from extending the discount period. And to drag this out for another month or so really defeats the whole purpose of it.
Yeah, but, and listen, I'm not arguing, I don't, as far as what the underlying action that council is taking, I certainly don't have an opinion on that one way or another, that's not my place. But an ordinance is a very formal process. It's the most formal legislative process that county council follows. You have public hearing, you have discussion from the public, you have, it's, it's introduced, it's advertised. And then to have, my feeling would be that it's not as much the bylaws, although the bylaw section regarding reconsideration seems consistent with Section 2.12 of the Charter. But there is a process, and the process is adopt another ordinance to rescind the one that you, that you passed last week and effectuate the change in, in direction that you want to effectuate. But to, to, I completely understand that it's, it's inconvenient at, at this point to do it this way, but I think just as much the, the bylaw restriction, I, I also believe that the charter restricts it. Because the only one who could actually request reconsideration, the county manager, within five days after it's passed, and then, other than that, if, if it wasn't requested by the county manager, if they, if the charter clearly says that, that ordinance becomes effective then. So I understand your, your concern with that, but the only way I see around it at this point is to reintroduce an ordinance to rescind, ordinance to rescind.
Okay.
If I could, if I could, Mr. Chair?
Who's speaking?
Harry Haas.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Haas.
If you look at the Charter, Section 2.14, it talks about emergency ordinances and can be introduced at this very meeting. And it's, I could, I could read it to you if you'd like, for the betterment of.
Yeah, that's what we used before. And, but I think Ms. Crocamo's point there, Mr. Haas, was it's only good for 30 days.
Well, I, I asked already if I could introduce an ordinance, and you told me it had to be in writing, Mr. McGinley.
Well, that's what, that's what the requires.
Well, if we're talking about, if we're talking about when time is of the essence, if you'd be willing to waive the in-writing part, I could, we could introduce it now.
I don't think I can myself waive it. If other people want to waive it, that's fine, but I, I don't believe I have the authority or the right to be able to do that.
Well, can I make a, a motion to ask for a vote of council to waive the in-writing requirement?
Actually, I don't mean to be a pain on this, Mr. Chair. Section 211, under the Charter, says a proposed ordinance may be introduced by any member of county council, shall be in writing, and except as may otherwise be provided for in the Charter or applicable law, shall be limited to one subject clearly expressed in the title. So I think whatever bylaw that, that we're referring to now that's requiring the writing, apparently that also emanates from the Charter.
Okay, thank you. I will withdraw the motion.
You'll withdraw, Mr. Griffith, you'll draw the second?
Yes, but I have a question for the solicitor as well, when I get a moment.
Absolutely. So that motion is off the table, and then Ms. Howe, your resolution?
Um, well, we could certainly consider the resolution if you'd like to, but I think that if we look at that resolution, then we're going to have to understand that next week we have to, would have to introduce an ordinance to repeal the ordinance that was passed last week. So why don't we do that? Can we do that? Can we put this resolution up to a vote? I would like to make the motion to.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. All right, I'm, I'm sorry, I got ahead a little bit, and Mr. Griffith had a question.
Okay.
Please.
Okay, I just, and this is just for the Code Review Committee. So if I could get clarification from either Ms. Crocamo or Mr. DeLuca on Rule 8E of our bylaws, that applies to nothing then, correct? "Any motion which is defeated by a majority vote of council may not be introduced for reconsideration at any meeting except as follows." So you can't, you can't use that clause anywhere, can we? Because resolutions are the same process.
Yeah, but I think, and I didn't, I didn't write this, I don't remember the, what this was trying to address, but, you know, I mean, a lot of the rules from the bylaw, a lot of the bylaws presumably came about, they should be consistent with the terms of the Charter. This is for any motion which is defeated, and Ms. Attorney Crocamo had mentioned that when she read the, the Section 8E, Rule 8E, it's for any motion which is defeated. I would imagine if a motion to introduce an ordinance was defeated by a majority vote of council.
Then it applies, then it applies, then it would apply.
So, so for an example, I'm sorry, so for an example, if, if we had an, introduced an ordinance and we only got three votes, it was defeated, then we could bring it back if we got the opposing side to reintroduce, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, and, you know, maybe that, this is something that the, the co-committee should look at.
And that would apply to a resolution, if it requires a six-vote majority and we only had five, then we could reconsider it.
If it's defeated.
Right. Okay, that clarified.
Where we've had, somebody made a, a decision to change their vote.
Okay.
One item that I remember was the borrowing. That was brought up during a time when the state government did not pass their budget till March. We had a back and forth on that, and there was a reversal of one of the options.
Okay, go ahead, I'm, I'm sorry, Linda, go ahead.
Well.
Oh, that's okay.
That takes care of number three, so Ms. Howe, you're going down to number four?
Sure, number four is the resolution. I believe that the law actually said that it needed to be done by resolution, but that the law that was passed on April 20th allows for us to extend discount period through August 31st. And so that's what this resolution is about. And I would like to make a motion that we adopt this resolution and extend the discount period on the taxes through August 31st.
Ms. Howe makes the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion, Walter.
Second.
I think it was Mr. Griffith first, who, who was the other person?
Mr. Haas thirds it.
Okay, Mr. Haas, you've got third, okay, very good. On to question. Do we need any further explanation, anyone? Ms. Howe?
Um.
Questions for Ms. Howe?
Yes, it's Sheila.
Yes, go ahead.
Linda, so you're extending the discount period from August 15th to August 31st?
No. No.
Okay, tell me.
From April 17th to August 31st, Sheila.
Discount period has already passed in our county, April 17th. So.
Right, and the law provided that we could extend the discount period up to August 31st?
That's correct.
That we could waive the penalty phase, you know, up through December 31st. But this would extend the, the discount period because I believe that more people would have an incentive to pay if they're still getting the 2% discount than, you know, to pay it earlier than by waiving the penalty fee through the end of the year.
I see, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, this is Leanne.
Go ahead, Leanne.
Okay.
And then Mr. Bob will be after Leanne, please.
There are some Q and A from an anonymous person. I don't know if anyone saw those, or do you want me to read them?
Do you have some Q and A? Let's see what I have here. The only Q and A I have, Leanne, back that the bridge was delayed.
What there is, if you look on the live event Q and A, there's, the first one is moderator, question mark, and then the other one is, "Two-thirds of all tax bills have been paid. This is a burden for all involved in tax collection." And then another one is, "Time is not of the essence." So that is, again, an anonymous person who sent those. And I guess that, that was for you, maybe, moderator?
Yeah, I see him now, thank you.
And I also had a question about what happens with anyone that did pay in this period of just the face value, and if we change this, we have to refund that money back to them?
Well, if I could, Mr. McGinley?
Uh, I think Mr. Swets would have to answer that. Mr. Swets?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The question, did you hear the question from Ms. McDonough?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Five pounds out of the 70.
Five pounds out of the 76, we already had 295 people pay at face. So I don't know if that's high, low, or average, but if you took that and extrapolated among our 76 municipalities, that would be thousands of refunds the county would have to process after just furloughing people in the Budget and Finance Office and the rest of the county. Also, inconvenience to tax collectors.
How many people paid at face value already?
For the five pounds that we collect for, 295, that's for five of the 76 municipalities.
Those are people that have paid since April 17th?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Vogel, you had a question?
Uh, Leanne drafted, I'm good.
Okay. Are you okay then? Ms. McDermott, are you okay? You have any other questions, or you're fine?
I guess just a point to make, with paying it, so the 2%, for instance, on a building, you know, $150,000, depending on the municipality, that 2% could possibly equate to $10 or $15, and certainly $10 means a lot to everyone, but is that enough to incentivize them to pay within that discount period?
Okay. Uh, Mr. Vogel, you okay?
Yeah, I'm good. My questions have been answered, thank you.
Mr. Chair? Any other questions? Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, it's Chris, just a question from Brian. Could Brian expound upon what is, what possibilities is this going to do to the, our county money, and how are we going to, how are we going to proceed down the line? I know he doesn't have all the answers. He has a lot more answers than I do.
Okay. Mr. Swets, you want to respond to that?
Well, Mr. McGinley, while we're waiting for Mr. Swets to get on the line, it's Walter. The only, the only, the concern that I have is, is we wanted to, I, I think that what we want to do is we want to stay within the spirit of the law, and I know we saw, we did see the email from, I guess it was from the Budget and Finance Department, of what different municipalities have done regarding, regarding this whole situation. Now, I did speak to Berks County, and I did speak to Crawford County, because Ramilda brought it up at the last meeting, that those folks acted on the ordinance. They, they are on the same, well, Berks County said they wanted to wait until they topped at a tax collector. Apparently for that paperwork, they've, they've gotten okay to do that. But this, this really, I mean, I understand the gentleman's comment from Freeland Borough, but clearly, this is, this is something that the county is trying to do on a 2% discount. The law says we can extend it to April 30, to August 30th, or we could get rid of the penalty fee, and that's why we, I drafted the ordinance the way I did it. When we amended it to, to what Mr. Vogel wanted to do, I think, I think that just causes more, more problems, because I just think that it just interferes with what the intent of the law was. And, and that's, I think, the whole spirit of this 2% discount. If we're interested in revenue, I think the idea to give a 2% discount would generate faster revenue. I certainly understand Mr. Swets' dilemma, that now we're going to have to research all those databases, see who paid their taxes on August 18th, and then refund that money back. I understand that's, that's a huge task, and that was why I pulled my ordinance when we originally started this whole process. But I think if we're interested in getting revenue, this would be the quickest way to get it done at a 2% discount.
Hey, Mr. Swets, did you come back on?
I'm on, Mr. McGinley.
Did you hear Mr. Perry's question?
Yes, I did. So Mr. Perry's question, obviously the 2% is a material amount, but more importantly is working with the tax collectors and the municipalities. As I mentioned last week, I thought it would be more prudent to work with them, since this is the beginning of the face period. I understand tonight we're discussing rebate which passed, but moving rebate is going to cause more problems and less money for the county, and it's going to be a logistical nightmare.
Okay.
If I could, if I could be here as well, Mr. McGinley, Dave Pedder?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Mr. Pedder.
You know, counsel, it's, it's your decision as to how you would like to move forward with the taxes, this is purely in your stead, but under the county manager is, we need to follow what you do. And my concern is we're not getting clear guidance here, and we're not taking the municipalities into consideration here. We put out our tax bills. Last week, we decided to extend the face period for two months. Okay, well now we're looking at two separate ordinances, again, we just removed the one ordinance, now we have a second ordinance that's going to extend a, a reap, I mean, the discount period. And then after discount period comes additional time on the face period. After that comes, after that comes the penalty period. All this information gets trickled down to the, to the municipalities who have to continue to work with us, who are still struggling like everybody else out there to try to make a go of this. We need to have a clear decision, and we need to make it, you know, hopefully tonight. Whichever way you want to go with things, we're going to follow which your, your, your direction. You guys make the policies, but we got to make a decision, and we got to follow through with it. That's my only thing I have to say.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
Sheila, you know, I guess I'm repeating the same thing that, if I remember correctly, Mr. Schnee and Mr. Perry did last week. You know, if we vote against this, we're painted as the bad guys, you know? But in fact, there are a lot of issues here, aside from just the discount. It's just, you know, we're going to lose money, and the county, I thought, was not in any position to lose any money with the, you know, in the future.
Anyone else?
Yes, this is Leanne.
Yes, go ahead.
As many negative things that we've heard about it, you hear the positive of just keeping it the way, again, the municipalities. Not all of the municipalities are on board, so, so many people will say, you have to do this for the taxpayer, but again, it's, it's a matter of, the municipalities all don't want this, and not 100% of the taxpayers agree with that thought either, you know, so it's not just all one, all one way. My thought is, you have to consider the municipalities as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'd just like to say myself that I've received a lot of communications from the municipalities and individual taxpayers, and I think they're very happy with what the decision was last week. And I think if we continue to move dates and deadlines, it just adds to the confusion, and certainly I think the municipalities have pretty much the majority that I've received, so I would say it's something like seven or eight to one, would be happy with the extension to August 18th, but they, they need their monies in order to keep their municipalities operating. Anyone else? We have a motion from Ms. Haas, seconded by Mr. Griffith, and third by Mr. Haas, to extend the discount period to August 31st by resolution. Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radell?
No.
Ms. Sedman? Ms. Sedman?
I see her microphone's muted.
Ms. Sedman, you have your microphone muted?
There you go.
Okay. Am I okay?
Yeah, you're okay.
It's a no.
Okay.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vogel?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Seven no's, four yes.
The resolution defeated. Moving down to number four, Mr. Griffith, do you want to make a motion in regard to this letter?
Uh, yes, I'd like to make a motion that we get on, get, uh, get on as supporting the letter to the President of the United States regarding the direct federal aid for the counties due to the COVID-19 relief package.
We have a second from Mr. Griffith.
Second.
Who's that, please?
Chris.
Chris, Mr. Perry? On the question? Everybody has a copy of the letter, I think, Mr. Griffith sent out earlier today. Any questions in that regard? The one thing I thought of when I looked at the email, you know, in the past when we've sent letters, we've had a signature page, listing all the signatures of the council members. We do have an extra copy from a previous letter that we sent out, and if everyone is all right with that, we would use that extra copy as our signature page for this letter in order to get it out on time, and also due to the pandemic situation, no one would have to try to get to the courthouse to sign. So I just make that as a comment. If everybody's all right with that, that's what we'll do. If we're, if someone is, has a problem with that, please speak up.
Yeah, I think we do have a deadline of May the 1st, and I just want everybody to understand, so I don't have a problem with that at all.
Okay.
Mr. McGinley, I, as you know, I have that problem with my emails, I get them a day late or so, so I haven't seen the letter.
The letter's asking for the federal government to provide financial aid to the counties and local governments.
So I, I heard it when Walter talked about it, and I, I mean, I'm going to vote without seeing the letter, because I think it sounds great.
And it's being promoted by, or sponsored by CCAP.
Right.
You know, it's, all the counties across Pennsylvania pretty much, I think, will be on board with this, hopefully. Obviously, I think everybody realizes we're in a crisis, and we do need help.
May I jump in for one second? This is Sharon.
Absolutely.
Sheila, there's, I posted that letter on the website under our agendas, in case, if you have access to that, you could probably look at it right now, if you need to. I'm just letting everyone know that it's out there.
Thank you. No other comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chair, one quick...
Yes.
It's Chris, I just, I just want to thank Walter. I would like to thank Walter for bringing this to our attention. It's, it's well worth doing this. Thanks, Walter.
You're welcome, Chris.
Thank you. Duly noted. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Haas? Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vogel?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. We're down to public comment on agenda items. Members of the public who are with us on the meeting, please speak up, give me your name first, so we have that recorded, please. Go ahead, Mr. Matt.
Can they hear me?
I can hear you.
Richard Manta.
Okay, Mr. Matt's first.
Can you hear me?
Yep, Mr. Matt's first.
Hello?
Go ahead, Mr. Matt.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I wanted to thank Walter Griffin for putting forth the email, and the federal government has, has accumulated quite a bit of money for COVID-19 and for every facet of our community, state, and it only makes sense to go to the federal government for assistance, Lees County, to capitalize on what, what mankind did not call on. I hope it wasn't created by mankind, but yeah, it's something that, that is absolutely necessary in this circumstance. Thank you, Walter Griffin.
Thank you. Mr. Manta?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Richard.
Walter, can you hear me?
Mr. Manta, speak up, please. Mr. Manta?
Please. My speaker's off.
Go ahead.
I'm at home. There's no, I have no speakers on it, on my phone.
Just, just talk, please. Please. Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, please.
Okay. I'd like to commend Walter Griffin also on his ordinance that he passed, that he, that he wrote, and also, if they would have just passed the ordinance in the beginning, there would be no question about the, the change that Mr. Vogel made, so, I mean, it just, it would have been redundant, this, this meeting would have been a lot quicker, because it would have already been passed, and, and that's my feeling, but the people do need help in the valley. It, it's not just, it's not just every individual, it's the whole valley. People don't have money to spend at this present time, because they haven't gotten any money from their employers. So, I mean, you know, I still didn't get my stimulus check, and I file my taxes every year, and it, it seems like the people that don't need it, they're getting their stimulus first, and the people that don't have any money are getting their stimulus last. That's my opinion, and I'll sit back and wait for a comment.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else in the public?
Yes, I would like to speak up.
Anyone else in the public?
Hello?
Go ahead.
Hello, I would like to speak up.
What's your name, please?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. What's your name?
Sam Troy.
Go ahead, Mr. Troy.
Sam Troy from Wilkes-Barre.
Go ahead.
I would like to, I would like to know, has council taken any steps itself, or currently encouraged Mr. Pedry to take any steps? I don't know if I'm getting through, are you hearing me okay?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
To mitigate this crisis, this impact of this crisis, which is unprecedented, on the residents of the county, by laying off, I'd like to know how many county workers have been laid off? I know there were some voluntary layoffs. Has the council or Mr. Pedry sought to lay off any more people involuntarily, in other words, compelling people to be laid off? I mean, that would be a sensible way, I think, to save some money. I certainly don't like to see anybody lose their job, even temporarily, but I know there, I have the strong feeling that there are a lot of nonessential workers in the courthouse, and I think more action should be taken. I don't know if council has that sort of authority to do that, or does that have to come from Mr. Pedry? If it comes from Mr. Pedry, I would hope that council would pass an ordinance or a motion to encourage him to allow for more nonessential layoffs, so that the county could save money to mitigate this crisis, because everybody knows, nobody really knows, I guess, what the, the total effect is going to be on the county fiscally, but it's certainly going to be very hard, no matter how many letters you write to the federal government, how much help you're going to get from the state or the feds, this is going to be a very strong impact. I think another way that the county might look at saving some money, there are probably several, I'm going to three minutes, I don't know how much time I have, but I, I'd like to mention the...
Another one, Mr. Troy.
Thank you. The prison situation, I know that some prisoners who are not deemed violent, I guess this would be a total thing, that the only, only prisoners who have been, some prisoners have been released because of relatively trivial crimes, and I'd like to know if there's been any concerted effort on the, on the county officials, from the Department of Corrections or whoever... effort on the county officials from the Department of Corrections or whoever to take any more steps specifically to stop the spread of the virus, potential spread of the virus within the county correction system. And I wonder if council could probably have a little more oversight in that regard. And I wonder if they could also encourage the district attorney from not prosecuting, I know that the courts are relatively quiet now, can we stop the district attorney from prosecuting cases against people who have committed trivial crimes like shoplifting, for instance, or possession of marijuana? Those are my questions and comments. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Troy, as far as layoffs, they're part of the executive branch. There were, I think, approximately 20 people took a voluntary layoff, but the total number of people who were laid off is 128, I believe. So you can see many more people who were laid off. Not voluntary. Anyone else?
Mr. McGinley, I just wanted to say something to Mr. Troy. I checked with Mr. Rakovich the other day, a couple times already, and at least at that time, he said there were no cases of COVID-19 in the prison and that everything was going very well. The prisoners were working to keep things as sanitary as possible, the prisoners, as well as the staff.
Have any prisoners been released?
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Mr. McGinley, Mr. McGinley, this is Mark Raybo calling.
Go ahead, you're on.
All right, first off, I would like to acknowledge the county manager's dilemma with regards to the crisis management. However, I take issue with the fact that there's been a lot of political cheerleading going on with regards to this crisis management. I mean, down in Hazelton, I mean, it's, it's actually, it's really a hot day down here. The mayor says that 60%, the city council meeting right now, he just said that 60% of all the cases come back positive for infected of COVID-19. So, and I was just passing by when I got, you know, to the supermarket, and there were cars lined up at the car wash side by side, people from out of state washing the cars, their vehicles, no masks, no social distancing. And I just spoke to the mayor about it, and the mayor said he sent the police down there to, you know, straighten things out. So I mean, this is, I mean, it's, it's not like, you know, everybody's following the guidelines down here. And I think what needs to happen is, and here's the other, I take issue with this. ... the people that are flocking in from New York and New Jersey that are considered backdoor racists. And I take issue with that because I'm just pointing out that if you're coming from the epicenter, what the media and what federal officials say is the epicenter of the virus, how can anybody call anybody who's saying, who's pointing it out as backdoor racists? That is repugnant, and that is demeaning to the intelligence of people who live here, you know? So I take issue with that, and especially with the state representative who's been saying that. I'm not going to say names, Mr. McGinley, because I'm a very professional person here, but I think that needs to be addressed. And secondly, I'd like to commend Mr. Griffin as far as with the tax, you know, for the taxes, you know, being pushed, the date being pushed for the penalty phase, but I have a question with regards to the voting machines. I mean, or the voting. Last time I checked.
We're going to discuss voting in the work session, Mr. Raybo.
Okay, but can I make, can I ask one question with regards to that before you discuss?
Yeah, that's your last question, but go ahead.
Yes, it is. I have a question for the solicitors. Is that, is there a means or any kind of case law that says that if a person chooses to vote on primary or on general election day that they could be prevented? Because last time I checked, Pennsylvania Constitution, Article 1, Section 5, says that any person who wants to vote by their choosing cannot be stopped by civil or military means. That is their right. I don't have the amendment in front of me, but I know it's Article 1, Section 5 of the state constitution. So if they can answer that question for me, Mr. McGinley, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I can't answer that question, but we can ask the solicitors to look at that and get an answer. Thank you. Anyone else?
Brian Shiner.
Mr. Shiner, go ahead. Mr. Shiner, go ahead.
Okay. I realize that we're experiencing some problems here in a learning curve with this new technology of communicating remotely, but there's some major malfunctions here. First of all, the people calling in are not being told to turn off their speakerphone or their speakers on their computers, which is why there's all this other feedback. Plus, we're hearing things, as Mark just said, what was that, what's happening? Because we all heard the words, "You've been muted." I also heard before, "You're on hold." This needs to be worked out. There's also about a minute delay between talking on the phone or doing it through the laptop on team. So that's another source of confusion here. There's also the problem that the local number for calling in is not a local number, it's a Scranton, Dunmore to be exact, exchange. So had I called in on my landline last week, I would be receiving a phone bill for over $21 plus taxes, just because I participated in the meeting last week by telephone. So these are some things that have to be looked at and maybe get this worked out. Other organizations, other governments are having these meetings and they're running smoothly. The video changes, as did your meeting yesterday for the code review. Mr. McGinley, I believe you were just not using a webcam, but it was changing back and forth between Linda and Walter, and then your voice. So it can be done, but I think we need to get this ironed out and sooner than later.
Well, we're working on it, and I took some notes, and we'll see if we can make some corrections.
Okay.
Anyone else?
The crisis team. I'm not quite finished, Mr. McGinley, the crisis team.
Sorry, I thought you were. Go ahead.
There was an article in the paper the other day about the crisis team, the 70-member team and all they're doing. But since each one of council member is on that team in one capacity or another, could we get a report as to who's been at the meetings, when they've had meetings, and what's been going on? Because other than the article in the paper saying what a great job they're all doing, we've had nothing.
Yeah, I can make that request for you, Mr. Shiner.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any member of the public?
Jason Carr, St. Louisburg, Pennsylvania. I would just like to thank Linda Houck for making that vote. Yes, I would like to thank Councilwoman Linda Houck for understanding the plight of the common taxpayer and the common person who's not connected in the county. Again, there are many, many, many thousands of people who have been told to stay home, who whose wish was to actually work instead of stay home. It is incomprehensible that this council voted the way they did tonight, and to not give a helping hand to the residents of Luzerne County is an absolute disgrace and extremely disappointing. And it again reaffirms my point of what a great decision that I made decades ago to leave that disgraceful, corrupt county. I would like to know from Mr. Swets and from Mr. Pedry, how are you going to help the homeowners in Luzerne County that were told to stay home by your great governor if they cannot pay their taxes on their home? Are you going to foreclose on their properties?
Any other questions, Mr. Carr? Great, thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Mr. McGinley, to Mr. Shiner's point, we had two meetings with the emergency crisis committee that I sit on. Both of them were probably about 15 minutes long, so I will answer to what committee I sat on and how many meetings we had, and so that's my report from my committee.
Okay. What I will do tomorrow is send an email to each of the council people, ask them to give me a short synopsis of their team that they're working with, and we'll have that ready, and we'll make sure that's available for the public. Okay? Thank you. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved, Schnee.
Mr. Schnee, do we have a second?
Second, Urban.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? None heard? We'll move right to the work session, please. We've already done the pledge and the moment of silence. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffin?
Present.
Mr. Huggs? Mr. Huggs? Ms. House?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. Motion, any additions or deletions from the work session agenda?
The only addition I have, Mr. McGinley, is the ability for the Board of Elections to attend the meeting.
They've been authorized to attend, they were sent invitations. I understand a couple of them are taking advantage of that. I'm not sure if everyone, but they're all up for the opportunity.
Could we add them to the agenda after number two with the manager?
They'll be after, yeah, Mr. Pedry's update, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Sure. We have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffin, do we have a second?
Second, Urban. Urban?
Mr. Urban. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? None heard? Motion carries. First, Mr. Swets.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Attached in your packet is the monthly budget reports along with two word documents. I'll start with the monthly budget reports. So the monthly budget reports are as of the end of March. A lot of the information that was given.
Mr. Swets, are you on?
Sounded like somebody.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Swets.
Sorry, I lost you there for a second.
All right, no problem.
All the information that is in front of you as of March 30th, the detailed report obviously gives more detailed information than the quarterly report, but a lot of it is repetitive because we just did the first quarter report last week. I was not going to go through line by line the printout for March. As you can see in some of the payable reports and some of the other cash reports, there is nowhere near as much activity as normal with limited staff and limited public availability. So you'll see that bills are being paid as they come in, some will have to get moved to 30 days, but we are keeping track of it. As far as the two letters, and then I'll take questions at the end. As far as the two word documents, the one was in regard to Mr. Griffin's questions from last week about voting machines and was any dollars deposited in New World and where were they in New World? And as of the time that was sent, there was none. We did receive some money, but that was related to 911 at this point. So as of right now, we've received no federal or state reimbursement for the voting machines. And then there was a question on a budget change due to the debt service refinancing, and that is a change that we made once we actually got the final numbers after the estimates that were given by PFM. That's something that we always do as a budget amendment. We have always just made the change and never sent that as a budget transfer, but I will say that is something that the county cannot refinance again until 2025. So it won't be something we're doing anytime soon, but that was standard practice that once we got the final information, we trued up to the final budget numbers. We only had an estimate at the time of the budget. And I'll take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Swets, please.
It's Walter, Mr. McGinley. I have a couple of questions. So we didn't receive our HAVA security grant money for $343,000 yet, apparently from the letter, and we didn't get our PETA funding grant from the federal government for the $2.1 million yet. We haven't received that. Is there any reason why we have a delay on that, Brian, do you know?
No, there's not. I just knew that we didn't receive it. I can make sure everything's up to date, but as of right now, I had looked right after the meeting and followed up again this morning and afternoon to make sure. And as I said, the only money we had at this point was related to the 911 and no money related to the voting machine reimbursement.
Yeah, I mean, if there's any, just follow up on the forms or anything, make sure all the forms are filled out, maybe, maybe it's just the state. I don't doubt for a second that the state's just not being timely, but just, I just think we should have got at least our $343,000 by now, but I appreciate that. The other question that I have, I was looking at the budget report, and I see in the general government, 4176, I think, and I don't have the budget report right in front of me here, but it shows 176% in spending on the one line item. I'm trying to see what number that is. I think I wrote down 59964. Could you explain if that's, are we over budget on that line item or?
Sure, so I could take it. Yeah, so I think as we talked before, council passes the budget, and we as administration live within the budget, but there are times where we have to change things. Last year, an example was the cyber attack. This year, my team just made a line for COVID-19. So there are times while the budget is the guide, and New World's default is not to let you go over budget, that for purposes of tracking, we're trying to put something in one space. We are trying to get all the information together for voting machines, for COVID-19, but the 4176 general government line should not be over. So that one, and by that percentage, I'd have to actually look up. I don't know that one off the top of my head, but I will say that a fault is not to go over budget, that's how it's set up. We understand the budget that's passed by council, but there are times for us to track it the way that it needs to be tracked, that things need to be recorded differently, and you can go over budget, but that's not the fault.
Okay, and then I'm going down a little further on page 19 of 56 of the budget report. I did write the page number down on my notes, so might make it easier for you to follow along. I see that the district attorney is 100% in item 59946. Do we anticipate any more spending in that line item? Do you know of? And I know that's obviously her budget, so you may not be able to answer that.
I don't believe so, but I would definitely confirm with their office, but I don't believe. I think that was a vehicle or something of that nature, and I think it was purchased and that's done, but I will confirm that.
Okay, so that was a vehicle that was purchased this year then, apparently, right?
I believe so. I'll confirm what it was and confirm with the district attorney, just to make sure.
Okay, and then the other.
But I don't anticipate any more spending in that line.
Okay, and then I do have another line item for the elections budget report, page 32 of 56. And I know I addressed this at the last meeting that we had as well, is we budgeted no money in that line item, and we're at $50 some thousand, I believe, is what the line item says. So are we going to transfer money in to true that up, or how are we going to handle that $50 some thousand overage that's in that account?
Sure, so the account will be over for all the expenses, but the revenue will also be over for the revenue piece once it's received. So I think I understand your point that, you know, a fund probably should have been created in hindsight, but it wasn't. It's all being tracked through the general fund. So yes, that line will go over, but there should be revenue, including the revenue that you mentioned, when it comes in that we're using to cover that line.
And what was that $50 some thousand spent for? It says machinery greater than $5,000. Do you have an idea what that was spent on, actually?
I'd have to research it. I don't know. As I said last meeting, I don't know every single, it makes it easy to send me an email, and I can answer like I did the other time, honestly.
Sure, no, I understand. I don't expect you to have that information off the top, but I mean, you know, when there's $54,000 spent there, and I mean, I could pull it up in New World and see where that was spent, but I just thought maybe you might have known, so. And the other question that I have on tracking, are we going to set up, and I know that, I did look at New World, I did see some, I think I might have seen an account for the COVID-19 expenses that we're spending that we may get reimbursed through grant money and all that other, how are we tracking any monies that were spent particularly regarding the emergency? How are we tracking any monies that were spent particularly, uh, regarding the emergency situation that we're in? Like for Bureau of Elections, I see we spend a lot of money for wipes for the screens and, and gloves and face shields and all of that kind of thing for, and I know that's all because of the COVID-19 emergency and, you know, the preparation for people voting at voting booths. So, or voting districts. So I'm wondering, are we tracking that somehow where we can make sure that we get uh, proper reimbursement from the federal or the state government? Cause I saw some emails from, uh, C cap that said that, uh, there's some funding coming out for, uh, funding for elections. So how are we tracking any monies that are spent through that, uh, COVID-19?
Sure, so we set up the COVID-19, uh, fund, the account. And it's going to be set up in every fund, so we're not going to have it by department. So you won't see the COVID-19 for elections versus operations of the prison. But what we're going to do is take all the information and move it out of the individual departments and into the line item. So anything for general fund will be in the line item for COVID-19 for general fund. If any of the other funds, the non-general funds have COVID-19 activity. So for the April report, the report you'll get next time, that's what the budget and policy analysts are going through right now. We'll have journal entries to move things out of the line where they were purchased if they are related to COVID-19 and into COVID-19 now that that GL has set up in New World.
Oh, you're, you're doing that for the, for the next report then?
Correct. It's in process and it'll be in the April report.
Okay, yeah, I, I just think that we need to track that so we get proper reimbursement. I see there's a lot of things being spent in New World regarding the emergency and, and, and obviously we have to spend the money. I just want to make sure we track it well so we get reimbursed for it as well. Um, and I think that is about all I have on the budget report. Actually, Mr. McGinley. Uh, if I, something else comes up, why I'll, I'll chime in. Thank you.
Okay, I think, um, Mr. Griffith, uh, I think we got an email from, um, Senator Toomey's office yesterday with some information about monies that will be available to help with the elections and hopefully with the pandemic also, but uh, I guess we'll be getting more information as it comes forward. Okay, moving down to, uh, Manager Pedri. He has a PowerPoint presentation that's going to be coming up on the screen. Jared? Can you put that up, please? Mr. Pedri, it's all yours.
Hi, thanks. Uh, can you, you guys hear me? Maybe some muted my mic here.
Yep.
Um, so obviously, uh, we've been working on a bunch of different issues throughout this, uh, this, this COVID uh, crisis that's been happening, uh, in Luzerne County, across the Commonwealth, across the nation right now. Uh, I want to thank the council members for working with me, uh, throughout this entire process. All of our attention has been drawn to what are we doing for this coronavirus, uh, pandemic over these past uh, six weeks. Uh, we've learned a lot. Uh, we are still trying to work with our municipalities, uh, the Department of Health, Department of State on everything that we're doing. And I would, um, also want to commend every single citizen of Luzerne County, uh, for doing their part, for trying to flatten the curve here. Uh, it's been, uh, we've been seeing a, a lowering in our numbers. Um, unfortunately, our deaths continue to rise, most of them coming from our nursing homes, which is a, uh, frightening pandemic as we move forward. But it does seem like we are continually making strides here to, to fight this and hopefully we can get back to our new normal. So we have now pivoted, uh, to face, uh, our next challenge and that's the primary election, uh, on June 2nd of 2020. Uh, believe it or not, today was supposed to be the primary election and it seems like a lot has, uh, transpired since this last time this was moved or not. Uh, but now, uh, the, the governor has moved the Junes to, this entire primary to June 2nd. So I've been working with, um, our Elections Director Shelby Wachilla, Dave Parsnick and a, a bunch of other people to come forth with a preliminary plan, uh, in order to run the June 2nd, 2020 election. And I could ask Jared to go to the next slide, please. Thank you. Here are the issues that we have with regard to the, uh, to the pandemic. Number one, I would like nothing more than to run an election the way it is always run. Um, I, I personally love going to the polls. I think it's the best thing to, to be out there. I love to see people utilizing the polls. I love to see people voting every single day. Unfortunately, this June 2nd, 2020 will not be, um, a normal voting session. And this is not only for us, but for everybody across the entire, uh, Commonwealth. Couple of different issues. Number one, social distancing guidelines. Everything that we're telling the governor, that the governor's been telling us, from Dr. Fashi's been telling us, that President Trump's been telling us. Um, every single person says avoid large groups, um, and that's the best thing we can do right now. Obviously, when we have a primary, we do have, especially a presidential year, the numbers of people coming out is a, is a higher number. So we do have our social distancing guidelines at one point, keeping people safe. Uh, and on the other hand, we have our, uh, ability for people to come out and vote. Here's the thing, people are going to want to come out to vote and that's a great thing. Luzerne County, we have our super voters that come out every single time, no matter what, no matter if it's raining, snowing, sleeting, no matter what, they're always there. So people will still come out to vote, which is a great thing, but we have to do it properly and we got to do it safely. Second thing is our polling places. Currently, we have 144 polling places across Luzerne County. Now numerous places have, uh, reached out to us and expressed concern and said that they are not interested in having us there. We're talking about our church basements, our senior centers, our nursing homes. Uh, those types of areas that cannot bring people into the area, that's going to be an issue. Um, as we move forward, uh, and so a bunch of polling places have told us we really can't have you here this time. In addition, looking at some of our polling places, I'm concerned for the safety of the people in those places because they are smaller places. Uh, I'm thinking of, um, a couple of different, you know, like, like the, the West Side Club in Avoca, which is a phenomenal place. Uh, but you know, may not have the, the necessary, um, spread out area that we need to. St. James Church in Hazelton. Uh, once again, uh, maybe not big enough in order to accommodate a larger area. Those are issues that every single polling place has come with. So our polling places have informed us, we're not going to be able to have them in those locations. Number three concern is the poll workers. We don't have as many poll workers. Many poll workers have reached out to us and said they're not really interested in serving. Some have flat out said, there's no way I'm, I'm, I'm coming in to serve. Um, and some, and almost all of our poll workers are at an advanced age. Uh, almost all our poll workers are over 65 years of age and at the at-risk population. Um, so those individuals are most at need. So set, the, the last thing is our voting machine, our voting machines utilize touchscreens. Uh, the previous voting machines utilize touchscreens as well as our current new voting machines also utilize touchscreens. Meaning that they will have to be cleaned and sanitized after every use, uh, while we fight this pandemic. And if I can move to the next, uh, slide, please, Jared? So what we do is we put together a plan, uh, and this is the preliminary plan. We are, um, in the process of still working on this. Uh, we are open for suggestions, uh, and that's the reason why we're coming to you, uh, today to try to come up with, uh, ideas to the best way to do this in these unprecedented times. Uh, the first thing is the mail-in ballot. Uh, there's a law, changed the law in 2020 and this is the safest and recommended option for the June 2nd, 2020 election. Uh, we're going to be utilizing recently released state funds. Uh, and we're going to be mailing an application for mail-in ballot to every single registered Republican and Democrat in the county who hasn't already asked for one. Uh, with a self-addressed stamped envelope. Uh, that mail is set to go out for this Friday, May 1st. They have to be returned to the Election Bureau under the law by, uh, Thursday, May 26th. Um, those, uh, those are the dates that we have here. One question that I had was why don't we put a ballot in with the application as well? That way it's only one step. Uh, the issue with that is, uh, the ballots need to be in a special envelope, um, and they need to be sorted separately. Secondly is we're going to have to have a petition, uh, the actual, uh, ballot needs to be printed on special paper. And somebody sending an application has to sign off on that this is this, that, that you're the individual asking for this and that you're, um, under penalty of perjury, the person filling this thing out. So we're not going to be able, the, the, the cost to send an application with a ballot and to have all those issues, it just doesn't make any sense here. But what we will be doing is mail the application out to every single voter. Now, a voter can either take that application and say, thank you very much, I'm going to fill it out and put it in my, in the self-addressed, uh, addressed stamped envelope and return it. Or they could say, I'm not interested in doing this at all. And I'm going to go back, uh, I want to vote in person, which is also an option. You can still do that. Um, but we're giving every single voter an option to do it. It's the best thing that we can do right now in order to maintain social distancing, um, in order to, to do it. So the law changed for the first time in forever and we do have the mail-in ballot option. I've been on this, you know, from the beginning. I think it's a great option that people should be taking advantage of. Um, and as I said, my third point here, we, we currently have approximately 20,000 applications already received. Um, so you're looking at, uh, we usually get between 20 to 40,000 people come out to vote in a primary. We're already at 20,000 applications received, which is a great thing for our, uh, Commonwealth in our, in our county, that people want to be involved in their government. And this is before the applications are going out in the mass mailing. Now ballots are already beginning, uh, to be mailed out to those people who have previously asked for one. In fact, yesterday they started, uh, going out. Uh, so the step would be, we get the application, you fill it out, you mail it back to the Election Bureau. The Election Bureau then enters it into the shore system, prints out a ballot, sends you your, uh, your, your ballot with a special envelope on the special paper. It then gets, uh, sent to the voter, voter fills it out and mails it back in. Those individuals don't have to wait in line, don't have to do anything. Uh, you can vote from the safety and security of your own home. And that's the first step, uh, that we're trying to do to make it a safe, uh, a safe election for June 2nd. And if I can move to the next line, Jared? Uh, the second step would be the consolidation of polling places. So, um, Act 12 of 2020, this is uh, authorizes the counties consolidate up to 60% of our polling places without a court order. So we currently have 144 places. Now the preliminary plan is to move those 144 places into 58 well-ventilated larger buildings. And that number is going to move, okay? So that, that may, we may be adding more uh, than 58, but that's the number that we have, uh, pinned, um, up right now. Of the 58 plans that we have right now, 32 locations are currently being utilized. We're going to keep those polling places. They're big enough. They're spread out enough. They meet all the guidelines. They, they said that they would still, still be our host. They're still going to be there. Five locations that we currently utilize will be expanded to accommodate additional wards. So we'll get a bigger place and we'll be able to add other, other wards in there, um, that will, that will be able to be in there. Now we've also located 21 new polling locations across multiple precincts. So these are going to be new, uh, 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 polling places that we're only going to utilize for this June 2nd election. This will not be something that we go back to in November. So working with people here, I came up with the idea and I sat down with people of working with, um, high schools and our school and, and our school superintendents. Because here's the reason why I've identified schools as, as great polling locations for the June 2nd, 2020 primary. Number one, the kids are not in school. Number two, um, they, everybody, they're centrally located. People know where they are. Number three, handicap parking, uh, no problem. Number four, um, uh, we can spread everybody out in the gym and people come, could come in to vote. They're going to vote in this spread out gym and then they can be on their way. People will have the option to continue to vote in person if they so choose. So you're either going to be voting, um, under this plan, under one of the locations currently utilized um, in a, or in a, or in a, or in a potentially a school district. Now I had a, a Zoom call today with the superintendents where I sat down and talked to them. Obviously, there's, there's, has to be steps that they have to take, uh, in order for us to, um, uh, accommodate this. So we're not ready to finalize that list yet and get it out there as we continue to work on these things. But this would be the, the, the plan as of right now, April 28th. Um, as I said, places may be added or removed based upon our needs. Now, these actions in my preliminary plan, step one and through alleviates the concerns of polling places. Okay, we didn't have enough polling places. People were telling us they didn't want us to come for the June election. No problem. We now have enough under the law, under the law that was passed, that we are well within the law to have, to have, uh, a, a, a location there. Number two, poll workers. Obviously, if I have less polling places, I don't, I don't have to have as many poll workers. So that's the next step. And number three, social distancing concern is everything that we're doing here is trying to maintain safety and security for, for our, for our citizens as well as our, our workers. The social distancing concerns are going to be addressed because we're going to be spreading out all, potentially over gyms or into well-ventilated, larger buildings. And in addition, we're giving every single voter the opportunity to vote in person if they so choose. And number two is we're giving them an application mailed to their house for mail-in ballot if they so choose. We are, uh, working with people as best we possibly can. Now the third step, uh, to alleviate the next concern, I'll turn to Jared to change the page. Jared, appreciate your help on this as well. May 6, 2020 is the Election Board meeting. Um, this is the date that we're going to be targeting to have the final, uh, plan in place for presentations to the Election Board for their final review. Um, and have everybody's input i- in, involved in the final plan. Number two, new polling places. They have to be advertised and posted in accordance with Act 12 of 2020. The voting will be done in this June 20th, uh, the June 2nd election by paper ballot and Dominion scanners. This is a change from what we have been doing. We will still be utilizing the Dominion new machines, touchscreens for handicap and ADA use. And they will be cleaned after every use. A bunch of different issues here. Number one, utilizing a touchscreen means that somebody's going to actually have to touch it. That means that somebody's finger to that touchscreen is going to have to be on that screen. With the pandemic going on right now, I can't in good conscience tell everybody that they can use these things one after the another. So what we'll do is, well, those individuals will use that machine and then it will be cleaned by a poll worker, uh, utilizing wipes. They then have to draw, as, if anybody's tried to clean their cell phone, um, you know, I, I just cleaned my, mine with an alcohol wipe. You, you clean it off, you get everything on it, and then you have to wait a second, uh, prior to, um, uh, prior to it being used again. So that's going to slow down the process. The easiest way for us to do this and do it the correct way would be to utilize paper ballots and the Dominion scanners. Now, this is the method of voting for over half of the, um, the counties, um, across Pennsylvania. Uh, they all use paper ballots. Lackawanna County uses paper ballots and scanners. So what we'll do is you'll fill out the, your, your, you'll get, you come in, you get your ballot, you, you'll fill out the paperwork. We're going to give you a pen that's going to be purchased, uh, with state and federal money. And you fill out that ballot, you feed it into the Dominion scanner and you keep your pen and you're on your way. Uh, also in addition, the state has provide, will be providing us with, uh, PPE, hand sanitizer, wipes, masks, all those different things from there. So we will be still utilizing the Dominion touchscreen machines for our handicap and ADAs. But the majority of voters will be utilizing paper ballots, like the majority of voters across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, other than, you know, uh, some of our bigger counties. Um, it's not ideal, but once again, we're trying to pivot and work on these things as best we possibly can. Um, the paper ballots will be there, um, and people will fill out the things just like they do in Lackawanna County. Feed into the scanner, they're on their way. And this, this alleviates my fourth concern that I, that I identified was the touchscreen. So the next slide, and I thank you, Jared, for doing all this. I've been working with everybody on this. Uh, as, as I've said in the past, I am, um, uh, in no way, shape or form have a dearth of ideas. I've had, have, have, uh, have all the good ideas on this and, and believe me, I am not uh, that, that smart. So what I would do is I've asked for assistance. Uh, this has been reviewed by the Department of State. I've had personal conversations with Kathy Bookvar on this. I talked to other counties, um, about what are they doing? How, how everybody's working on these things? As I said, I talked to the superintendents of school districts because I think some of them will be playing a, a key role, um, in this, um, um, in this process. Um, I talked to the mayors of all our cities, uh, because, uh, this, face it, that's what a number of the, the, the most of our voters are going to be coming out for. So I talked to the, I talked to our, our four mayors from our four cities to get their thoughts and they had some great ideas. I talked to many state legislators on this process as well. And I individually called every single election board member, uh, yesterday and talked to them. So I can get their thoughts, um, and incorporate them into the plan. Um, after all these conversations, um, uh, we're going to continue to work on these things and now I need your advice. I need your, uh, attention to this and I would like to have your input on this from County Council. I will be submitting the finalized plan on May 6, 2020 to the Election Board, uh, for their review. Now, under the legal side of things, um, uh, the consolidation, uh, under Act 12 uh, is, has to be not less than 20 days before the election. So we're good on that. That's going to be, I think that's May 13th, I think, or something like, so we're good on that. And addition posting, um, only has to be done 15 days before the election. So we're still on track with this. And we're going to get the notification out there to those individuals, uh, who have, have a polling place change. So really what it comes down to is this. Number one, vote by mail if you could. It's our recommendation to do so. If you don't want to vote by mail, that's fine. You can still vote in person. You may be voting in person at a different place and we're going to be providing you with notice and, and of those things as well. Uh, you'll be, you'll be, uh, voting, uh, via paper. And once again, this is only for the June 2nd election. The November election is going to be a whole different thing. First off, we won't be able to utilize the schools because kids are going to be in school, hopefully. Number two, we're going to be using our machines. We're going to be doing all these different things. But this will get us through this issue right now. And what I found in working this Corona thing is I keep an eye on the future, but I got to deal with right, with what's right in front of us. Uh, we've been making decisions, um, and we've been working on these things all the way through. So this is a decision that I've been working on as a draft format, as a preliminary plan for your thoughts. So I'm leaving up to council right now for any questions or concerns and I'd love to have your thoughts on this.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Manager.
Mr. Manager.
Mr. Sneak.
Do we have a list of people interested in working the polls? You said there were a number of people that touched out to you that they weren't interested this year. Do we have a list of people that are interested?
Yes, we've been working off our poll worker list. We've been working off the poll worker list and calling them one by one to make sure, are you interested? You still want to be involved, you still want to help us out on June 2nd?
Okay, and with the scanners and the machines, when is the training going to be for these people?
So the training is already in place. We are going to be working with every single, our elections bureau will be working with our judge of elections for the specific for the machines. The scanners are, I mean, they're pretty simple because it's basically a Scantron. But that's training will be done in the next week or two, either in person if the governor relaxes his social distancing guidelines or we're going to be doing it online via a video if we have to get it done. But we will be providing in-person training to the Rovers and to the judges of elections as well so that those individuals know exactly what's going on as well. And once again, we're going to have a smaller number of places, of polling places. So it'll be a small number of people that actually have to be trained on this one thing for June.
Other questions for manager Pedri?
Mr. Chairman.
And how are we getting, how are we getting the word out to the voters in different areas where they're going to be going to vote?
So May 6th, once we have the final plan in place, we're going to be posting everything on our Facebook page. We're going to be getting everything on our website, we're going to be putting everything in the paper. All that information will be out there. We could do a, if we do have to change a polling place, we could do the postcard. The law doesn't require us to do that, there obviously is a huge cost for that as well. That's another step that we can do, but we will be trying to get this information out there. So if your polling place has changed from the normal place to another place, how do you go about doing these things? We're going to get that information out there via our newspapers, Facebook, website and potentially the postcards as well.
Mr. Haas, I think you're on line there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pedri, hats off to you and your team. You clearly put a lot of time into this, I can definitely tell, you thought a lot of this through and done your research. So I personally appreciate you and I know the folks at home listening and who are voting, appreciate you too. A couple of comments, absolutely, a couple of comments and mostly very positive. Number one, you know, Mr. Sneak asked about people who you're going to have work at the polls, you run through the list, it's very logical. Could you consider maybe college kids and also folks who are laid off or out of work out there too? We know there's a lot of people who are not working. So again, if you're in a bind, that might be a really good.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Number two, the state has already sent out postcards and you might want to check with Kathy Brockivar again just to double check. I don't know if we have to spend the expense of sending out all the self-addressed stamped envelopes and everything like that all over again. I mean, I know we're getting 14 points, some million dollars from the feds to pay for a lot of this. But I just want to make sure we're prudent about that. But I don't know if you double checked with her on that issue because it seems like a little redundant to me. The other things about the pen and taking home, just awesome, about the social distancing guidelines. I know Snyder County on that committee when I sat with CCAP, Snyder County's doing a lot of that. And you might want to reach out to them if you have any other concerns about that. I think they're really taking the leadership.
You said Snyder County?
Yeah, Snyder County, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and let me see here, I wrote down some other things. The election bureau meeting, that is going to be on May 6th, you said?
Correct.
All right, do you recall when the last meeting was held?
Well, Mr. Haas, we're going to have, there's a couple of election board members on and we can certainly ask them.
Oh, okay, all right, because you know, because this question pertains to them, but I'll ask it here too, it's just so I don't want to surprise them. But I appreciate Walter.
Go ahead.
No, no, it's all right. So those questions were as a councilperson. This one refers to the balloting, hats off to Mr. Griffith who talked about that, making sure that was posted online because I didn't even check that out. But I noticed for the congressional candidates, they just have the county listed there. And that appears to me it's in violation of the state statute that says you need your ward or your borough or your township or your city also after the name. And that is in Article 10, Section 1002, subsection B. So I just want to make sure that the election board, those are there with an earshot there that they're looking at that and making sure that's not according to the state statute as well. But otherwise, you know, we brought this up a couple of times just last meeting with the election stuff. And again, I'm personally very impressed, keep up the good work. This is going to take a lot of effort to have a good consistent election. Again, a lot of people will not mail in those ballots, they've told me. So on behalf of them, I really appreciate you making sure that people could come out in the flesh and vote. So thanks, everybody.
Mr. Haas, if I can ask you, please send that information in regards to what's behind the candidate's name. So we'll have the solicitor's office make sure that somebody checks that out, please.
Yeah, can I just text term meld or yourself?
Oh, yeah, that'd be fine.
All right, yeah, I'll send that right out, yeah, just check it out, appreciate that.
Any other people for questions for Mr.?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Urban first and LeAnn, please, thank you.
So quick question too, is I don't know if I missed this in your presentation. What about poll books, people have to sign in, are you going back to paper or are you going to be using the digital?
You know, that's a good, that's a good question, I haven't made a decision on that one yet. Here's the problem with the electronic poll books, electronic poll books, everybody uses the same stylus. So we'd have to go back to otherwise. So I am trying to get a cost as to what that would be if I go back to the sign in for the paper poll books. But I'm keeping track of all this as Mr. Griffith brought up because I think a lot of these costs will be reimbursed, reimbursable by the state because we are making these changes specifically for this primary, specifically for coronavirus.
And the other question is, I don't know, does the law allow one to go outside of their municipality to vote? Does, you know, like crossing boundaries in a sense because we have, you know, 76 municipalities, so.
Yeah.
Asking somebody to go from one township to another to go and vote.
Yeah, it does. So Act 12 of 2020, that was my first question as well because my first gut was, well, I'll have 76 polling places. And we'll put one in every municipality and maybe two or three in Wilkes-Barre and a couple in Hazelton, that kind of the bigger places. But the law, Act 12, does come up with the ability to move outside of your municipality. That being said, I'm still looking at this. So I think we came up with a pretty good plan of to, even the locations, if it is not in your specific location, you are within a quick driving distance of your other consolidated places. So I think that's a good opportunity. And as I said, for the bulk of these, for 32 of them, we're going to be utilizing the same places. But that was my exact same question, Mr. Urban.
Well, I mean, you're not going to have any issues with candidates that are in actually districts like, you know, the state reps or the congressional candidates with their boundaries, are you?
No, I don't think so.
You know, I mean, have you looked into that though?
According, the state hasn't, I told the state exactly what I'm doing on this thing and the state has no red flags on what we're going forward with.
Well, you get what I'm saying though, you can't vote for Eddie Dave Prashinsky, you know, down in Neskapeck.
Oh, right, of course not, no. So and like, and listen, 58, Neskapeck won't be voting in Wilkes-Barre, Wilkes-Barre won't be voting in Neskapeck.
But you get what I'm saying as far as balloting.
Sure.
To ensure the integrity of the ballot being.
So this is, right, right, so this is on the poll worker, when they come in, when they sign in, it's going to be Dave Pedry, Butler Township 4. This is your ballot and then you move forward from there. And that needs to be, that needs to be impressed upon our poll workers. But I think we'll be able to do it because we have a smaller number of poll workers who are going to be there.
Okay, and then another question was, is what is the process if, say for instance, somebody does send in an absentee but they decide they've changed their mind and want to go to the poll to vote, which the law allows them to do that?
I've asked for Department of State guidance on this and I've been told I will have a written response within a week.
Okay, because there are members of the public that have come to me and asked me.
Yeah, well, I said the same thing, like, how's this work? Like, say I want to say I mail it in and I show up at the polls, who's going to stop me? Kind of thing, well, I mean, like, but that would be considered voter fraud, but I have asked for a written opinion by the Department of State on this. And you know what, Mr. Urban, we're not the only county in this one. All 76 counties are looking to.
I'm just posing those questions because that's concerning with the public, so. You know, and, you know, if you're doing cleaning of the machines and you have electronic poll books, you're defeating some of the purpose there. That's all I was, you know, just wanted to bring the people's attention so you can work on it.
LeAnn?
Yes, hi, yeah, and I just wanted to agree with what Mr. Haas had said about being very thankful that you are offering this, that we can actually go to the polling station, so that's a wonderful thing. And Mr. Urban already asked the question that I was going to ask.
Okay. I would like to ask any members of the election board who are with us.
Mr. McGinley, I have something before they come in.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Mr..
That's okay, I had a couple of questions for the managers. And one of the, one of the big issues that I have is, there's a lot of things that we're doing here that I thought that maybe the election board should have voted on at some meeting prior. Now, I know they didn't have a meeting since March. Now, that's, that's not obviously the manager's issue, I think that's the board's issue. I think they should have had a meeting, soon as we found out that there was an emergency, I think they should have had a meeting immediately, either virtually or whatever, to decide how we're going to handle the election for April 28th, not knowing that it was going to be moved forward. That didn't happen. So my question is, you know, we're supposed to train the people on a brand new machine, that was supposed to be done already. I understand we have issues with the emergency and the lockdown and, but we can go to the grocery store and we could do all these other things that I think we could have easily set up the voter warehouse to train people to figure out how to use these machines long before, before now we're worrying about it. The polling place relocation, I'd like to know how many actual polling places we reached out to of the 144. They told us they will not allow us to be there before we consolidate because I don't know if Trucksville United Methodist Church was contacted or the Cross Creek Church out here where I live was even contacted to find out if we could be there or not. That, I don't think they were even contacted. Poll workers, I've spoken to some poll workers, haven't been called. I don't know if, all of them have been called, maybe they called and didn't get through. But, you know, there's a lot of variables here that we're just assuming that I don't, I don't know if the Board of Elections had a chance to improvise a plan. I think it's up to the board to approve the plan. And May 6th, if they're going to vote, if the board comes back and votes no, they don't like the plan, we're pretty close to the election now that come up with a new plan. I would have thought that the board would have had a hand in all of this discussion prior to it being put out there for, you know, for the manager to just say, well, we're going to go to schools, we're going to go, you know, wherever we're going to go. I think that should have been consulted to the board first. Election machine training, I mean, we haven't done any election machine training that I know of, other than train the trainer, I think they did one of those. Why, the other question is on the mail-in applications for ballots, is if, if the whole state is having the same problem, why isn't Harrisburg just sending out mail-in applications to everybody who's a registered voter in the entire state? Why are we just doing it on our side? I mean, I'm sure Erie County has the same problem, all 67 other counties have the same issues. So why is the state not taking the lead in sending out these mail-in applications? And how do we handle an absentee? If they get a mail-in ballot, we didn't give them the opportunity to get an absentee ballot. The other question is on contacting the Board of Elections. I know this came up before and I spoke to Mr. McGinley about it as well, where people call in, they don't get voicemail, they don't get an answer on the phone, they can't get the ballot. Did we take provisions into putting the ballots down into pen place in the vestibule? So people can get them from the vestibule without coming inside the double doors? That would be a way to give ballots out to people that have a question or want to get a ballot, they couldn't get a ballot. I think, I think we're pretty far behind the curve. Election Day, as the manager said, is actually today. I would have thought that everything that we needed to have done would have been done by today. And use the rest of the time to just sit back and make sure certain things that weren't done are done. Signing the poll book, I was thinking, why don't you get an ink pen with a stylus on the other end? That way you would be able to have a stylus for everybody to sign the poll book and they would have the pen to sign their ballot and fill in their ballot at the same time, one pen, one stylus. You know, there's, there's the director's cell phone number. Anybody who has a cell phone that's provided by the county, and there's probably four or five of them in that office, that we pay for the cell phone and we pay for the phone number. That should be put up on the website for anybody who has a contact question that they can't get through to the 825-1715 number. They can call the cell phone number of Shelby or to Mary Beth or to Andrea. Any of those people have cell phones provided by the county. If they don't want to get calls after 5 o'clock, it's real simple, you just shut the phone off. But we need to make sure that we don't disenfranchise not a single voter in this county because of this coronavirus. And I understand we have issues, I certainly understand we want to make sure people are safe. People are going to the grocery store every day, people are driving their cars, they're doing things out there that they're able to do. I know we're in lockdown, but we can figure out a way to put six-foot lines on the road or on the sidewalk to make people safe distance. We have plenty of ways to do that. I think that we're going to disenfranchise a bunch of voters. My concern is I don't think we've spent enough time with the Board of Elections that actually run the election. They're responsible if this thing goes off the rails, it's the board's problem. They're the ones that are going to be held accountable if there's a challenge to the election. And I don't know if they've been put into getting enough input on that. The polling locations, they have to be approved by the board. I think May 6th may not be the day that maybe they don't like the location. You know, I just think we're way behind the curve on a lot of this stuff. And I mean, we bought, you know, from what I saw in the expenses of the election bureau, we bought plenty of face masks, we bought plenty of wipes, we bought plenty of gloves, we bought all this stuff in anticipation of using these machines. And now we're going to do a paper ballot, except for the people who are going to be handicapped or ADA required. And how many people of those, how many people vote by ADA ballot in the county or handicap? I would think we probably have a couple of them, I don't know how many, but I would think most of those folks are voting by absentee. So if we could get a number on how many people are actually ADA, going to the polls, voting by ADA? Because when I worked the polls, I don't think we ever had one come in ADA that had to use the machines. In fact, that was one of the machines on the old style machines that we put that service in and we hardly ever used it. So I just think that we're, I think we're running roughshod over the Board of Elections. I think the Board of Elections should have a whole lot more input. I think the chairman of the Board of Elections should have called a meeting in March, he's been the chairman since February. He should have called a meeting in March, he should have sat down with the Board of Elections and he should have sat down with the Bureau, Shelby specifically, and said, we have issues, we need to get them squared away now and a plan in place. And we'll have another meeting next week to see how that's going, instead of waiting until a month before the election. And now we have to figure out how we're going to notify everybody and we're changing polling places from 144 to 58. And things are just going to be upside down for a lot of voters in this county. And to rely on the news media to get that information out, I think is not the proper way to handle this situation. We need more training, I think we should have did a way better job than we've done so far. That's all I have, Mr. McGinley.
Thank you. Again, any of the election board members who are on with us, if they would announce their name?
Jose Adamas, chairman.
Okay, anyone else besides Jose Adamas?
I believe Pete and Keith tried to get on, but they had issues getting on, but they are listening in as of right now.
Who's speaking?
That's still me, I'm still speaking, Jose.
Okay, so there's two other members who are listening in on the meetings, what you're saying, correct?
Yep, yep, they're following along.
Okay, Jose, would you like to respond to anything that Mr. Griffith had to say there? Or would you like any comments in regards to the plan that manager Pedri presented?
At this point, we, I would like to wait till May 6th to actually make any final comments so everyone on the board can review in a public forum. All in all, some good things in the plan, but like I said, I'd like to review that and make a final decision during our May 6th meeting. March 11th was the last meeting that we had, April 8th was supposed to be the next meeting that we were supposed to have. But there had been discussion, you know, I did try to reach out, try to get the virtual meeting. On, uh, you know, I, I did try to reach out, try to get the virtual meeting set up. Um, but at the time, the, sorry, I lost my thought, my thought there. Um, at the time, the, the coronavirus had begun to, we, we had, we, the, the county had just been hit with the, the coronavirus. So there were still a lot of unknowns at the time. Um, and so I did reach out. Uh, you know, we were told that we certified the election, which completely understand. And, uh, there was a lot of other things happening with the county. Uh, so besides that, when we got up to the point with the April eighth meeting, um, the proclamation for the ballots was not ready yet. And so I, I did reach out to the rest of the board and, and said, is there anything else that we need to discuss at the time? Um, and there wasn't, there wasn't anything, uh, prevalent because we were still waiting for feedback from the state, um, to see how things were going to go. Uh, and so with that, because we didn't have, uh, the proclamation to approve or, or, you know, review and approve, uh, we didn't have the meeting on April eighth. It wasn't until the twenty-second of April that we started to get some kind of updates, um, from, from Dave in regards to, uh, some kind of plan for the primary. So it's not that we didn't want to. Um, it's just that we were told that we didn't have, the proclamation wasn't ready yet, um, for that, uh, at that time. So we, uh, we were just waiting for an update. And, uh, and then we eventually did, and, and May sixth was already a scheduled meeting. Um, so we, we took the time to make sure to get our meeting, uh, virtually set up, uh, which Dave did assist with and, and, uh, the IT team, thank you very much for that. Um, Jared, thank you. And, uh, and then we got that up on the twenty-fourth and we needed some time to get that advertised out there for the public so they knew, so they could join in as well, uh, when we, um, finalize the plan on May sixth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, anyone else?
Actually, Mr. McGinley, I have one more, uh, concern.
Go ahead, speak up.
So with, um, if, if somebody also, you know, during the process of voting, if a voter makes a mistake on a ballot, uh, process in which they can correct it would need to be addressed as well.
Okay.
Yeah, that's going to be addressed.
Since, you know, I think, actually, I was reading on, on the, uh, the mail-in ballot portion, that the elector would have to actually bring in the ballot and remit it and then sign a declaration. Um, it's in section thirteen, uh, thirteen oh-two D.
Of the election code?
Of the new election code, right.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Might want to make a note of that as well.
All right.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Um, yes, uh, I just wanted to know, are, are the people, are, are we able to allow people to use a, a paper ballot without using the machine at all? According to the election code, I think we have to decide, we, we can't, the board has to decide to do that. They can't, they can't just arbitrarily say you're going to vote by paper ballot.
Well, they're utilizing this, they're not voting by, they're not vote, they're still utilizing the scanners. The scanners are the actual thing under the law that needs to be utilized. The, the machines are a tool which, which marks, which marks the ballot. Uh, you then take the ballot and feed it into the scanners. The scanners are the actual, uh, are the actual machines that are certified by the state in order to have a, uh, a, a legal election. So the individuals will be voting by, uh, by paper, like they do in other counties, and feeding them into the scanner, uh, as opposed to the machine marking the, the ballot. This will just be the individual marks the ballot themselves, uh, with, uh, their own, their own pen and then provides that, and then feeds that into the scanner.
And that was kind of what I thought we were going to do when we asked for input on whether to buy the machines under public comment. I remember saying we should go with paper ballots. And we said, I think I, the comment was made that it was a step backward to do paper ballot. And here we are using paper ballot. Uh, can, is there any way that we can get our money back on the machines to do paper ballot? Is it cheaper for us?
Let's see how this primary goes.
I mean, I, I mean, we spend an awful lot of money on these electronic machines if we're not going to use them. And, and, and as you say, if it's not required by the law to have the machine, just the scanner, um, I, I, I think that might be a, you know, might be something to think at. Uh, I, I'm really concerned that the people are not aware, and I know we have time to make that happen, to let them know. But it's kind of disconcerting to me that the people are going to be told now that they're going to have to vote by paper ballot. And some people are really going to be annoyed at the fact, I would think, that you're going to have to actually go in and vote by paper ballot when we're so used to doing electronic machine. But, you know, I, I, that's going to be another, another hurdle for the, the Bureau to, uh, handle. But to, uh, uh, Jose's question is, you know, I don't, I don't know if you looked at the ballots that are out there on sample ballots, but our website is, is somewhat, and I do appreciate we put the banner up there for the presidential. Now, if you click on the very first page, open up as a county site, you click on presidential election and it opens up the Bureau of Elections page, which is a real step up to get that done. Because before you had to practically dig and prod to find out any information. But on the election board's page, there's a, a thing that says sample ballots. There is no sample ballot passed Hazelton for the Democrats. And there is no sample ballot passed, I think, uh, I forget what town it's, uh, Laurel Run, I believe, is one of them that's on the Dem, on the Republican side. So if you're a voter and you want to see what your sample ballot looks like, you can't see that if you live in Wilkes-Barre City on the website. There is no sample ballot for those municipalities. And I was just wondering, are we going to get those up anytime soon? So the people who are actually voting could see what their ballot looks like?
Anybody have a, uh, answer or response to that? Or will somebody get a response to that?
Sure, I'll, 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 I will be happy to take a look at that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's, you know, I mean, that's, that's important, the sample ballot. And I, I know the ballots are supposed to go out on April twenty-seventh, which was yesterday. My question is, has the Board of Elections approved that ballot? That, that is going to be sent out, it's supposed to be sent out yesterday, actually. So did the Board of Elections sit down and look at that ballot? That's going to be sent out to all the voters that requested a mail-in ballot so far? That I think there was like ten thousand. Has the board approved those ballots?
Mr. Bet, Mr. Griffith, the board doesn't have to approve the ballots. Your, 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 your statement of the law is incorrect.
Okay. So, so who makes sure that they're correct? If the, for, for instance, who's making sure that there's no problems? Like the one that Harry brought up where is, is registering the candidate as a state, as the congressional district, as his county instead of his residence?
That would be, that would be the Elections Bureau. And I've, I have a note here that I'm going to specifically look at that, that issue, um, as soon as we're off this, uh, this meeting.
But, but the ballots were supposed to go out yesterday.
Some of the ballots already went out yesterday.
So there, the ballots that went out will be incorrect if Harry's point is correct.
I will have to review that.
And that, that's my, then that's my question is, you know, we're, we're, we're not prepared to do what we're doing. If we're sending out ballots that haven't been reviewed and checked to make sure they're, they're right, how are you going to correct that issue if they've already gotten the ballot?
We're not there yet, Walter. You're four steps down the road here. We're one step, or the first step that we have here is we have a new preliminary plan in place. Nobody wants this coronavirus. Nobody wants this pandemic. We are pivoting the best we possibly can. Um, we're, uh, we're working with the board. I'm taking your thoughts. I'm taking your advice. I'm reviewing everything we possibly can here. We would have loved to have done a lot of the things that you said in your, uh, thing you just went off on for a couple of minutes there. I would have loved to have done a lot of those things. Problem was the social distancing guidelines. We weren't able to do a lot of those things. We're now in the process of getting this done. I'm going to be reviewing Harry's cons, Harry's concern specifically with the solicitors. If that is an issue, then we're going to deal with that. Uh, one thing that this, uh, pandemic has taught me is we can deal with a lot of things. We take them one step at a time. Uh, and we've been proactive on so many different, uh, so many different things here. We'll deal with that issue as well. But I'm going to, we're going to run this one down like everything else.
Well, why, why could we not do the training of the polling, of the machines?
The polling machines, we weren't able to do the training in the timeline that we set forth because of social distancing guidelines from the govern, from the governor's office. In addition, we've been working with Dominion on those things.
So, so we couldn't do that at the voter warehouse? We couldn't have got five people in and spaced them out, gave them masks and done the training over in the voter warehouse?
That's a great suggestion. I'll review that with our Bureau.
Well, that's my question is, why wasn't that done?
Well, I, I think at this point, it hasn't been done.
Right.
Mr. Pedri is going to review and, and come back with an answer. But right now, we can't go backwards.
Right.
Yep, we had to go forward.
I, I just, I just.
Unfortunately, we're faced with a situation and hopefully they'll come up with an excellent plan. I think the preliminary plan that was discussed a little bit earlier is a very good step. Um, I'm sure the Board of Elections may have other, uh, suggestions, recommendations, whatever. And I'm sure they'll end up with a fine plan with their all complete.
Did the Board, the Board of Elections approve the mail-in ballot, uh, si- application situation over the phone? Is that how they, uh, got the consensus? Because that's what I thought.
They, they didn't approve anything, Mr. Griffith. They, they can't, they, they haven't, they haven't met. This is something that we've been doing, um, internally. There is no applic, the application is under, we're, we're following state law. People are, people are able to receive an application for the mail-in ballot. You understand that, right?
Yeah, yeah. So why, so why did the board not have a meeting? Maybe I need to phrase it that way.
I think.
Well, I think Mr. Adamas addressed that, uh, there were some.
No, he didn't address it. Mr. Adamas, why did you not have a meeting?
Well, he did, I think, Mr. Griffith.
What did he say?
They tried to get it. There was issues about getting it set up. Uh, there was a lot of information that was not provided from the state as far as how we were going to proceed. Uh, yes, I think he did. Um, and obviously, the best situation would have been to have a meeting, but it didn't happen.
May I, may I chime in? This is Jose Adamas again.
Absolutely.
Also, I, I, I was under the impression, and everybody does know, I, I am, I am new, uh, the, uh, I did start in February, that the board has to approve the proclamation of the ballot. That is, that is something that I've been told time and time again, uh, as we certify the election. Uh, so, so I am under the impression that we do still need to approve the proclamation of the ballot, which we have not received at this time. Um, and also, yeah, the April eighth meeting is, because the proclamation was not ready yet. Um, and we were told that that would not be ready until June. Uh, so we were just waiting for that to be, uh, prepared and ready for us to review and approve the proclamation of the ballot.
Is the proclamation the same, approving the proclamation of the ballot is the, to certify that the ballots are correct?
No, Mr. Griffith, that is not the law.
Well, I, I'm asking, what is the, what is the purpose of that then?
I'll ask, I'll ask the Solicitor's Office to provide you with the memorandum that we provided to you previously that says what the, the roles of the bureaus are.
Well, I know what the roles of the Bureau are. You could read that in the statute. That's real easy. Um, yeah, I, I, okay, well, like I said, I, I, I agree. I just think that we're waiting.
If I may, just that we did provide a memo, uh, it was a few months ago as to the relative authority of the board. Uh, we will recirculate that.
Thank you. All right, let's move down to agenda items three, four, five, six, and seven. Ms. Hauk? And you're the chair of the, uh, County Code Review Committee? And, and I believe this is the items that we were talking about yesterday. You want to take those in order?
Mr. McGinley, before, Linda, before you start, could I just get an answer to my question, Tim? Regarding, are we going to, are we going to, uh, put the, the cell phone numbers up so people can contact somebody at the board if they need to, or the Bureau?
Uh, can I ask the question? I don't have, I personally don't have the answer, but someone has an answer? Mr. Pedri?
Hello?
Mr. Pedri?
I'm having a hard time with, uh, my audio, I'm sorry.
Okay. Mr. Griffith, I will get an answer for you and get that out to you as soon as possible, hopefully by tomorrow morning.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Okay. I'm sorry, Ms. Hauk. You got the podium.
Okay, well, uh, thank you. We did meet yesterday, the Code Review Committee met yesterday and went through, uh, the bylaws and, um, the administrative code to an extent. But, uh, we primarily spent our time on the bylaws. And, um, so the four items that, or five items that are listed on the agenda and are in the packet are actually what we, uh, discussed. But if you receive, you should have received an email yesterday afternoon from me, um, that puts them in order. There were a couple adjustments that were made during the Code Review Committee. Um, does everybody have the, the email that I sent yesterday?
Does everybody who's received that? Anybody who did not receive it?
Sheila didn't.
You didn't?
No, I have a problem with my computer. I get them like a day late.
Okay. Well, um, all right. So, uh, what I'll do then is take them in the order that they're in the packet. And then, uh, there are only a couple adjustments in one of the amendments. So the first one in the packet is, is Rule one D. And this is, um, the same amendment that you've seen since February about the rules of telephonic and electronic media appearance. Um, if you look at the item in your packet, it shows the red lines where, um, the changes would be made. And what this does is review, um, or remove the, um, chair from giving permission. And it also, um, takes away the need for counsel to approve an, an electronic or telephonic appearance after the third incident of one of those appearances. Um, and this again was based on discussions that we had in January and early February about, um, whether it was actually legal for us as a council to have to vote on someone participating. Okay? Are there any questions about that?
Linda, just clarifying that, uh, when I looked at that, there's three, if you miss three meetings and then you have a fourth, then there is no vote and you'll participate in the fourth?
Right. And so Sheila, you know, for the last two years, or well, two and a half years, you know, we've had people who have had more than three absences and we, as a council, have had to take a vote on whether a person would be allowed to participate in the meeting.
And now we don't have to take the vote.
So not with these amendments, no, we would not be taking the vote.
That's fine.
Okay? Anyone else on that First Amendment? Okay, then let's take a look at eight F. Uh, and the one on eight F, and I'm just, I'm going to refer to my own document here so that I know what was changed. Um, the rule on eight F was the nomination procedure for appointments to authorities, boards, and commissions. And again, this was just based on what happened in, um, you know, the early part of this year when we had multiple seats that were available and, uh, we ran into a question about whether, how we would proceed. And the essence of this amendment is still that if, um, if we have multiple seats, we would still do the nominations as we always do and take all the nominations at once, close nominations, and then fill the seats individually. So we would vote on, um, a nominee as an, in, in an individual case, um, instead of going around and saying, name your three or, you know, name your four, if you have four, four seats to fill. You would go around, you would say, this is for a term expiring, you know, whatever date. Um, and who do you, who do you vote for, you know? And that's how we would do it. And we would do it for each seat. And it would just simplify it. It would, uh, alleviate the problem that happened, which was when there were more, there was more than one person who did not get, uh, the six votes. And, you know, there were ties down, farther down in the, in the vote tally. Um, so, uh, that's what that amendment is. Anybody on that one? Any comments, questions?
Well, Ms. Hauk, I, I think I mentioned yesterday, we'd like to have the ABC Committee review that.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, and so, you know, and, and what I said yesterday was that this is a procedural issue. Um, I certainly don't have any problem with anybody on council, um, taking a look at it. And, you know, it will affect the ABCs, um, only insofar as how someone is nominated. But again, I still think it's a procedural issue. I would like to ask that this be moved to a voting, the voting agenda. But again, I still think it's a procedural issue. I would like to ask that this be moved to a voting, the voting agenda, and then if the, um, ABC Committee or any council members have anything to add to it, uh, to change about it, we could take it up at that time. Does anybody else have anything to say about it now? Okay, Mr. Perry, then you'll look at it with your committee?
Absolutely. I think it's a good idea, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so next up is the 5B rule. And 5B is the, the rule that says, um, the regular, it states the regular places and times for council meetings. And so what it says is, it, now, is just that the meetings will occur on the second and fourth Tuesdays of every month. And then, um, uh, what's proposed is to add, add a start time no earlier than 6:01 PM. And then, um, to add a 5B1 to that, that says the Luzon County Manager State of the County address will be presented at a regular county council meeting no earlier than 6:01 PM. So in other words, we wouldn't have the, the, the State of the County address would take part, uh, no earlier than the time of the regular scheduled meeting. Any comments or questions on that one? None? Okay, um, hang on. So now we're looking at 5D. And 5D uh, is the procedure and notice for change of the council meeting schedule. Right now, it just says that the Chair may cancel or reschedule a regular council meeting. Um, and notice of the rescheduled meeting will be given promptly to all members. The proposed change would be to add that the Chair, after consulting with all members of County Council regarding availability, may cancel or reschedule a regular council meeting. And what we discussed yesterday was that this is really what happens, but, um, it doesn't hurt to put in writing what, uh, our procedure is, and, you know, even though it, it is what's been happening, um, we make, um, make the codes and the bylaws not necessarily for this group of people, but for, um, so that what we think is right is going to be in place for people after we're gone. Um, the other item in here is that the notice of any rescheduled regular meeting would be given to council members no later than 72 hours prior to the date of the change. And, um, that addition of the 72 hours is, is what's there. And again, as we discussed yesterday in the meeting, that is, uh, what's happening. Usually it's well in advance of 72 hours, but again, it doesn't hurt to put it into those bylaws. Any questions on, or comments on those? On, on the 5D amendments? Okay? And then the last one is 8D. 8D is this deals with the main motions to take or reconsider action, um, three, 8D3, which, uh, right now says that there's a second required to introduce a proposed ordinance. Um, there's a second required, it's debatable prior to the vote. Um, there's an affirmative vote of at least four council members needed, and there would be no debate on a proposed ordinance following its initial introduction and reading. What the proposed change would be, would be to add, um, of, under the debatable line prior to, to the vote to introduce, that the vote to introduce the ordinance cannot be tabled. So in other words, the Charter says that any, any council member can introduce an ordinance. Um, and the introduction of the ordinance does not adopt the ordinance. So what this change in the bylaws would do would be to prohibit, um, a vote to introduce it from being tabled, um, because there still will be a vote to adopt it, um, at a, at a later date. Ordinances can't be, um, adopted at the same meeting where they're introduced. So this would just say that the vote to introduce the ordinance could not be tabled. You would still be able to debate it, and then you would take it to the vote, and if you have an affirmative vote of at least four members, then there would be a vote on, to adopt it at a later date. Any comments on that one?
Yes. Mr. Schnee.
Go ahead.
Uh, Linda, I have no problem with that. The only problem I have with that is that it goes on a work session first. Because there's a lot of stuff that's just being thrown out there that people aren't giving a, a chance to think about it.
Well, I think that the ordinance procedure itself gives you at least, um, six days to think about it, because you can't vote on an ordinance. You, you can only vote to introduce it. You can't vote to introduce it and then immediately adopt it. So, um, that's, I think that's already set into the process for the ordinance. And I'll just say, Bob, that, you know, back when, uh, in 2012 and 2013, 2014, there was a lot of talk about how things came to council right on the, the voting session. Or there was a time when we had the work sessions directly before the voting session, and we would be faced with stuff that came in on the work session, and we'd be expected after maybe half an hour to actually vote on something, because then it was put on the voting session. And that's why we do what we do now, which is to usually introduce things on a work session and then talk about it there, and then go to a voting session the next week, like this. We're talking about this now, and you're going to have a couple weeks to think about it before you're actually going to vote on it. The ordinance has that built into it already. And, um, I think the question would be whether you could, um, insist that something has to be introduced at a work session, because the Charter does say that, um, anyone can bring an, or, uh, can bring an ordinance. And so, you know, the question of whether you're even going to consider it is whether you can get four people to agree that it should be considered. And I know that there are a lot of times where people have said, yes, I'll vote to introduce it just so that we can discuss it. And then you have your discussion on it, and it doesn't have to go to a vote at the next meeting. It can just start at work session. But the point is that it has to be introduced before you can have any discussion on it. Anybody else?
Well, I, I think from yesterday's meeting, one of the items was, can we have debate prior to the vote, because that's been a, a point of, uh, discussion. And obviously, by putting it in here, yes, the debate can occur prior to the vote for the introduction.
Well, that's always been there. That's in the current.
Been there, but we have not followed it all this time.
Well, okay.
And so, it is there, and it's highlighted, and I think everybody now will fully understand that. And that is an opportunity for people to talk and ask questions and whatever else necessary. And as Ms. Houck pointed out, it's only introduced, there's still a, a time lag of at least another meeting prior to the final, uh, vote on whether it gets passed or not. So there is some time. Uh, the introduction is not a definitive action. But you do have probably at least two weeks in most cases before you would be asked to do that.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, so Mrs. Hou, uh, Mrs. Houck.
Go ahead.
The, the only reason I brought that up at this time where we're on telephones and who's on a computer, that's the only reason I brought that up, because you really can't think about, uh, the ordinance beforehand or debate over, over the telephone.
It's difficult.
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Uh, well, that's it. That's the fifth one. So, um, you know, I, I would ask that they all be placed on the voting agenda, the next voting meeting.
Anybody have an issue with that? Okay.
Uh, Mr. McGinley, uh,
Go ahead.
Attorney Croco, I don't, uh, have an issue with that, but, uh, I, and I don't know when the next, uh, meeting will be scheduled, but, uh...
I'm back on the regular schedule now, so it'll be the second Tuesday in May.
Okay, uh, the Office of Law will have, uh, uh, some comments, uh, as to these amendments, uh, and we'll have them in a reasonable time, uh, for all council to review prior to the next meeting.
Very good.
Uh, if I could just say, Mr. McGinley, the Office of Law, um, has seen most of these for a couple weeks now, but, uh, regardless, we had the Code Review Committee meeting yesterday, and the Office of Law was invited to participate.
No, that's what happened, no, Ms. Houck, they didn't get the invitation.
Uh, Mr. Mr. DeLuca accepted the invitation.
Well, I got text message after the meeting and checking with, um, Mr. DeMaro and Jared, there was a, a problem there, and that's why they were not part of the meeting.
I just want to, uh, I, I...
It did indicate, it did indicate on the meeting, when we were in the meeting, that, uh, there had been an acceptance of the invitation.
Absolutely.
I, I accepted the invitation, and, uh, when I looked at the chat side, you would authorize Mr. McGinley and, uh, Mr. Griffith, but not myself or Ms., uh, or Attorney Croco.
I didn't authorize anybody, Mr. DeLuca. That was handled by the Technology Department.
I have no idea who did it on your behalf, but your name was there, and it indicated that you had approved, uh, McGinley and, uh, and Mr. Griffith.
So we'll make that correction going forward, that they'll be, uh, invited and participate.
And just, uh, for the record, uh, when I realized that I could not, uh, be part of the meeting, I texted, uh, DeMaro, tomorrow, and I emailed Sharon, and, uh, there were attempts, uh, to, uh, uh, include me in the meeting, but that just, uh, didn't occur.
Okay.
Mr. McGinley?
Uh, who's speaking?
Walter.
Go ahead.
Um, I just, I just need to, and I know this is a, a, a point that's come up before about, these are council bylaws. These are, these are rules that we make to run our council. And I certainly appreciate the fact that the Office of Law wants to make sure there's nothing illegal in the, uh, operation of council, but these are our rules. And we can make the rules to run our council any way we want to make them, providing they don't violate the law. And I don't understand why we have to go through this every time we want to make an amendment to our rules to make sure that they're legal. I mean, there were a lot of things in these rules that were not legal that were approved by the Office of Law before, and there was never anything done to straighten it out. And now we're straightening them out, and now it's just constant, well, we gotta wait, and we gotta wait, and we gotta wait. And this has been going on.
We will have the information, and it'll be on the voting session two weeks hence.
Oh, we should, and again, these, these things have been out there before. They've been out there a long time. There's no reason in the world why we haven't gotten an opinion from either the Solicitor's Office regarding these bylaw amendments. None. And to wait another week or two to get an opinion to say, well, you know what, this one amendment you guys made, I don't think it's good. I don't, I don't think it's fair to the committee that does the work to get this all done, to have us have to go back and rehash them all again. And these are our rules.
Mr. Chairman, uh, yes, Walt, when was the first committee meeting that you had to discuss those bylaws amendments and the administrative code amendments? It was yesterday.
No, no, we had it in February, I believe. We had a meeting.
No, this was the first committee meeting, uh, since, uh, Mrs. Houck had presented them, and since you, I believe you just submitted yours last week. Is that right?
Yeah, but these are operations of council.
Okay, but you just made a statement, said that, that the Office of Law had, had these for too long, and the fact is, the first time that the committee met to discuss these was yesterday.
Mr. McGinley, the first time the committee met to discuss them was yesterday, but they were actually out there before, and Mr. Griffith's amendments were made on February 25th. They were discussed at a work session on February 25th. There was an awful lot of time where these could have been taken a look at. You know, you knew they were out on the horizon there. Mr. McGinley, if you would just put them on the voting agenda, we'll get the legal council's opinion on them, and we'll take a vote on them and see what the majority of council wants to do with them.
And that's what will happen. It'll be on the voting agenda for the next meeting. Okay, thank you. Getting down to council committees, uh, in light of the time, if we could just go through, if there's been no activity, just say that, and we'll move on to the next committee. Mr. Bo?
Uh, haven't met yet, gonna meet mid-May, uh, to review the application process.
Thank you. Mr. Perry? Mr. Perry?
Hey, yes.
Okay?
Yes.
Budget, Finance, and Audit, we're meeting tomorrow at 4:30. Um, Mr. Swetz will be there, and the auditor will be getting an update on the audit process, and we'll also be reviewing the RFP, uh, because we're at the point where this is the fourth year for the auditor, so we'll be going out to select a new auditor going forward. Those are two items that we will definitely be, uh, working with tomorrow. Mr. Haas? Mr. Haas?
Nothing to report, sir.
Okay. Ms. McDermott?
Hi, yes, uh, we are setting up a, a meeting for next Tuesday.
Okay.
I'm just in the process of getting that, and it will be posted. Um, so hopefully we'll have some more information after that.
Yeah, and make sure that we get the information, Ms. Lawrence, so we can advertise it, please?
Yes, I did send an email.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Houck, do you have any more with the Code Review Committee?
Yeah, we will have a, we have a meeting scheduled for a month, next Monday. We're going to try to, uh, meet maybe weekly if possible. So next Monday will be our next Code Review Committee meeting.
At 2 o'clock?
2 o'clock.
Good, thank you. Uh, going over to the second page. Mr. Haas, I know your committee's probably been a little stalemate at this point.
Yeah, we've been sidelined again, Mr. Chair. Nothing to report.
Hopefully, uh, we'll get a break there. Uh, Riverfront Park, they haven't had any meetings. I think you've seen in the paper that the, uh, activities are normally scheduled for the Riverfront have been canceled or postponed at this point, and there's been no report at all about the Plains Township Tiff. So that gets us through the committee's public comment.
Mr. McGinley, you have something before a public comment?
Go ahead.
Um, I would like to know, on the Airport Board, I've requested many times to be put on that board. Where are we going? What, what's our status on that?
Which airport board you're speaking about?
The Wamui Valley Airport over in 44.
Yeah, I, I contacted someone, they didn't get back to me, but I'll make it up there tomorrow again.
Do I need to, like, get a vote from the council to get put on that board, or?
Uh, in the past, that's been just an appointment, I believe, but I will double check that also, Mr. Griffith, to get you the right answer.
Is there, is there something that you could share as to why we can't make that appointment?
Well, there's nothing that I know. I mean, I, I want to see where that board is at this point in time. We had a period of time where it was pretty, uh, decimated.
Well, there's a, there's a vacancy for a council member to be on that board, right?
No, not really. It was always like a liaison, uh, position, uh, Mr. Griffith. The members of the, that board are actually people appointed by council.
And, and you, you put people on that board, though?
I, uh, I haven't put anybody on. I think Mr. Bobek did, but, uh, maybe I did, I'm not sure.
Yeah, you put Harry Haas on there last, uh, two, two years ago, I think, or a year ago.
That's possible, I don't remember.
On the Airport Board, yep.
Oh, no, I never served on that.
Well, you're listed on the website.
On the 44th, on the 44th Airport.
That's what I mean, the 44th.
I was a liaison. Oh, yeah, many years ago, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, that's correct, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but I will get some information for you, Mr. Griffith.
Okay.
Public?
I have a comment, Ron Knapp.
Speak up, please.
Ron Knapp has a comment.
Go ahead.
Ronald Knapp?
Go ahead, Mr. Knapp.
KNAPP.
Yep.
K is an APP, and not NAP, K N A P. I have concerns about the mail-in ballots. Um, while I attend council meetings in Nanicoke, one specific meeting on March 4th, an elderly man made a statement during the public comment. His concern was that in the elderly home he resides, a neighbor brought it to his attention that someone was attempting to harvest votes. But he did not want to mention his name during the council meeting for fear of retaliation. Council member that responded, and I wouldn't use his name unless you want to investigate this, stated any kind of activity like that must be reported. You know, um, I, I'm going to call it like I see this, okay? Fear mongering has been a tactic used by politicians for years, and to get their agendas across. Yes, COVID-19 is a serious issue. It, it was slowed by the mediation put in place until plenty of PPE and respirators were made available. Now there is an ample supply. We can be responsible in social distancing at the polls. One last thing I want to mention. Manager Predre stated, said, the decision with his going forward on his idea had to be made by May 6th. The question about absentee ballots and the people showing up at the polls would be voter fraud. He said it will take a week for that answer to come down. That's the fifth. So what are they expecting to do? What are they gonna do? Ram it through? The, the conclusion? And that's only a week. The next council meeting is two weeks now. The, the bottom line is this, we are at a very pivotal point in American history. And for this to be in such, what I appear and see as being chaotic in the way this is being handled. Council McGriff has had it right by stating this should have been addressed well before this, because there's ser, there is serious implications if this isn't, isn't handled properly. And you know what? There's an old phrase, pray without ceasing. You know, we take that moment, moment of silence before the meeting. I say, we better start praying, because the future of our country, this hap, it happens on Main Street, the, the counties we live in. Okay, and that's the bottom line. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, anyone else from the public?
Mr. McGinley, it's Mark Raybo.
Go ahead, Mr. McGinley. Mr. Raybo first.
Thank you, Mr. McGinley. Uh, Mr. McGinley, thank you. Um, last year during the budget meetings, I said that, uh, the council should wait for the purchase on voting machines as, uh... as it was not a directive or an executive order by Governor Wolf. It was a press release issued on February 18th through his office, his press release office. So my assertion on that is that the council should have waited on the funding of that. Instead, they went through with the borrowing. Uh, I would like to ask as far as, you know, in the presentation made by Mr. Manager Pedri with regards to the verification of voters, whether they're by mail-in or by, when they go to the polling place. Because as Mr., as Manager Pedri and you, Mr. Chairman, and the rest of the council are aware, there are thousands of New York State and New Jersey State residents that are shacking up in Hazelton City and the surrounding municipalities around Hazelton during this crisis. So I just am very concerned about our election process being compromised because there's lack of verification or maybe a slippage of some sort of, you know, with regards to non-verification of actual residency. So I think what needs to happen is there needs to be, you know, some sort of process in place for actual verification. I know that they go by Pennsylvania driver's licenses. But, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you're aware of this, but a lot of the out-of-state residents claim multiple residencies, not only in New York, but also here in Pennsylvania or in New Jersey in Pennsylvania. So my question would be to the manager is if he has, him or the election board have that, you know, are they going to figure out how to determine the verification? Also, I would like the manager to have, when he has his discussions with the state officials, to please ask those same New York State residents and New Jersey State residents, since they're behind the curve now, to probably, to just politely go back to their home state instead of, you know, staying within Hazelton. Because I say this because if you saw the meeting with, in the president had with Governor, Florida Governor Ron DeSantis, he said that the cases of new infected COVID persons infected with COVID actually went down when they stopped the travel from New York to Florida. So I would ask, once again, I know the manager has asked Governor Wolf and the state legislators, legislators to discuss this with the interstate travel. I know that the governor can't close down the interstates, but he can, he has access, he has authority over state roads.
Thank you.
So I would like to ask the manager to, you know, also put up the, yeah, I'm finishing up right now, Mr. McGinley.
Yeah, because we have another.
Campaign finance information. Okay, campaign finance information over the years to be put on the county website or on the election portion of the county website. How would that be done for this year's election? Because, you know, as you know, people can't go into the election office to get that information. So if they can, if the county manager or members of the election board, if they're still on, can answer that. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, I thought Mr. Mantle was requesting time?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Yes, yes. Mr. McGinley, all right. Some of these ideas are, are good. Some of these ideas are reaching way out. Now, I have, I have an idea of my own. And there's a place up on Route 315. It's an old Army Reserve Center. And I think Plains Township is in charge of it. It's an ideal spot for a location for voters. If there's a big auditorium there, the building is huge. And that would be a good location. And also, what about the Kingston Armory? The Kingston Armory is a big building. If it set up several polling places in that Kingston Armory, I mean, my gosh, it's huge. You know, there's a lot of huge places that they, Jackson Township Fire Hall is huge. I mean, there's a lot of places out there that would be, all you have to do is contact them. And I'm sure that, that they would be willing to open their doors to fulfill their political and legal right to vote. And what Walter said was, was great, a great idea. Because get a pen with a stylus on it. And believe me, that little rubber stylus can act as your finger on a voting machine. It has the sensitivity and it, and it could ask Brian Shiner is out there listening. You can touch that screen and you don't even have to touch it with your finger. You could touch it with the stylus. And there's no, there's no finger touching, there's no nothing. That stylus, you can also sign your name. I've done it several times at the VA hospital. You touch that touchscreen and sign your name with that little rubber stylus. But that would be another thing that was brought up, that's a great idea. And the money factor that is behind all of this thing is let's get the biggest bang for our buck. And believe me, those people from the voting places, I had a problem to try to get my, my registration, to change my registration and to get ballots for myself. And I was really surprised that there was nobody really caring about this. And the election is, is right around the corner. I mean, my gosh, guys, look, look at the time. The time, you're chewing this time up with petty stuff that, just do it. Get off the horse and do it. Get it done. Thank you.
Any other members of the public, please?
Jason Carstairs, Pennsylvania.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, at this point, I would like to know from possibly Solicitor DeLuca or Manager Pedri, should I retain an attorney to force or have you begin following the state law regarding purchases out of the repository? And at what timetable will you be making a decision on following Pennsylvania state law regarding purchases out of the repository?
Mr. DeLuca or Mr. Pedri, did either one hear that?
Um, we're, we are following the law. The question is whether or not we choose to, whether the county chooses to change its policy with regard to automatically reducing an assessment. But at this point, we are following, following state law. I'd be interested to hear of the name of the attorney from the Attorney General's office that you spoke to that may have said differently. I'd love to have a conversation with him or her. If you'd like, you could get me that information of that lawyer that said that. We confirmed with an attorney from our office who handles the tax assessment that the statute was as we read it, which is that the, you could use the repository amount as a proof of fair market value, which would eliminate the requirement that an appellant secure a, an appraisal to submit for reassessment to have their, or for a tax assessment appeal. But it is not required by law that it be automatically adjusted by the county.
Okay, Mr. Carr, if you want to forward that information?
I'll have, I'll have, I'll have the name forwarded. I also, on Mr. Pedri's advice, went to the assessor's office to file an appeal. And they told me that I didn't have to because it was up for discussion.
Okay.
And I've never heard from them from six weeks ago.
Okay. Anyone else in the public?
Right, Brian Shiner, Kingston.
Go ahead.
The Manager Pedri said about issuing pens and using paper ballots instead of the electronic marking devices. And I think the idea of using a stylus is the better way to go. We purchase these machines, we may as well roll them out and use them. The stylus can be used on the electronic poll book for people to sign their name. And it can also be used to activate the electronic screen to do the printed ballot, which can then be fed into the tabulator. The styluses are cheaper than pens. And the people can take their stylus home and they can use them on their smartphones or their tablets or whatever they want. I think it's a much more practical, much more financially reasonable way to go than giving everyone ink pens and going with paper ballots that's an additional expense. Thank you.
Great, thank you. On the question and answer, there's Mary Ann Hearn's from Wright County. Wrote about the taxpayers that are already paid. Will they want refunds from now so they can pay later? We'll have to refer that. Mr. Olet, who's a member of the election board, wrote a couple items. If a voter chooses to vote by mail, they cannot vote by, at the poll. They must use the mail-in ballot. That's the first comment. His second comment, we want to encourage people to vote by mail. Our mailing will reinforce the state postcard message. And having the application included will make it easier for people to use this method. And his third comment was ADA compliance is federal law. Anyone else in the public? Are we ready for a motion to adjourn the work session? Motion?
Motion, Sheila.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Stay safe. And the meetings will resume as per the schedule, beginning the second Tuesday in May. Thank you.